This is Jason Anstrin, Chairman of Killingley Town Council. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 14th. At this point, we're going to open a public hearing for Item 14A. Item 14A is unfinished business for Town Council action. Consideration on a resolution to authorize the town manager to expend up to $150,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the Housing Authority elevator renovation project. Ms. Clori, could you go over this, please?
Yes, my thing is loud. The Fiscal Subcommittee of the Town Council evaluated this. This came to the town. The elevator, this is at Maple Courts 2, the multi-story facility. They've had some challenges with the elevator. They need to do a rehabilitation of that elevator. And, you know, as everyone can imagine, the occupants of that building use that elevator all the time consistently. It's also very critical for emergency services access to those individuals within those units. So they've had challenges where the elevator has gone down and it's been challenging for them to get parts. The recommendation is for a renovation of that to make it truly functional for a longer period of time. The initial quote on that was $100,000. There is some additional work that will need to be done to the mechanical room area as far as HVAC, which is why the request got... The Fiscal Subcommittee recommended it instead of just $100,000, $150,000 to accommodate any of those additional renovations or additional components that need to be added during that renovation. So it came before the Town Council last month in which you set this public hearing, and then action on this item would be later on in your regular meeting.
Thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to come up and speak to this item, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Carol Green. I live at 660 Upper Maple Street. I'm here to represent the Housing Authority. I am the Director. There's just a few things that I would like all of you to know prior to you having to vote. And one of them that I think is very important is that I stress that the elevator has been well-maintained. I have some costs here that this is just within the last six years. We have spent $106,000 on that elevator. $27,000 of it was from a small cities grant, but $79,000 was out of pocket. And it wasn't all just for the maintenance agreement. A lot of it was for repairs. The thing of it is that it is, it's been deemed obsolete. And every time that they have come in to fix it, it's a case where they're having to shack parts, literally. They have a warehouse somewhere, and they've saved some of the older parts, used parts, and they're able to grab a few of these to be able to get the elevator up and running. So, I mean, it has been maintained, as I said, very well. Our biggest fear with a breakdown is we have people that are on the second floor that are unable to use the stairway. And there are other people that even the fire department could not get them down in the event of a fire or even a medical emergency, and most of it size-wise. But in the event that something happened, I mean, we are fearful of that. And really, to let you know, that elevator is like a carnival ride. It is going constantly. And I know we only have three floors, but the lower level needs the elevator to get up to the main floor, and then we have the top floor coming back down. So I appreciate you taking this into consideration, and I hope that it's something that you can vote yes for. Thank you.
Ed Grandelsky, Upper Maple Street. I think this is a necessary project. The Housing Authority does a great job over there. They're on a shoestring budget. And this thing, this elevator is up and down, up and down. The clientele, if there's any inference that there's a problem with the elevator, they get very excited over there. And so we got to get this back to where it should be, and hopefully, you know, we'll make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is if the elevator did go down, it would create a huge financial burden for the Housing Authority as well, having to relocate people until the elevator's up and running. So I fully agree with Mr. Grandelsky. I think this is definitely money well spent.
I think when we've had some of the applications for the upper funding, there's a difference between a want and a need, and I do, I think this is definitely a need. I definitely think this is very important.
With the Housing Authority, they, you know, we have a critical need. We have these elderly people. So it's a, it's great to have this in town. I mean, without it, I don't know where those people would go. So it helps us out an awful lot. And I, whatever we can do to help them, and, but this is the critical, when this goes down, I, I've been there when my mother was there, and luckily, she was on the main floor. She didn't have to ride the elevator. But for those who do, it, I have, any elevator, I walk the stairs here. I'd rather walk the stairs. Whatever impairments that I have, I will walk the stairs because I don't want to get stuck on an elevator. But we got to make sure that it's up, it's up to the latest codes and whatever.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this item before we close public hearing?
As a person, as a nurse that works, has worked primarily with the elderly population, finding alternatives for people that no longer can want the burden of having their own home, you know, Killingley's very, very fortunate in that we have several areas for, like Primrose and Westfield Village, and the Maple Courts 1 and 2 in Birchwood. I mean, we're very fortunate to be able to offer that, but I know there is definitely a waiting list. And so I think this is money well spent. We always, the one thing, I mean, I think about the community center over on Broad Street. I mean, that's limping its way to the finish line because that's in the same boat. You know, everything's, the only replacement parts are in museums at this point. So I think that's, you know, this would be a good use for the ARPA funds.
Thank you. Any more comments regarding this item? Seeing none, we will close public hearing, and we will move on to the regular Town Council meeting. At this time, I am calling the regular Town Council meeting to order. It is currently 7:12 PM. Mr. Wood, could you open us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, again, we are grateful that you have called men and women to serve, especially here in this town. We just ask that you would continue to guide our conversation, that you would give us one mind and one heart, not for one side or the other, but for what's best for our citizens so that we might serve them well. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance.
I'd like to make a motion to move 14, the consideration action on the resolution to authorize the town manager to expend up to $150,000 of the ARPA funding for the Housing Authority elevator project to number four, after four, before five?
Okay. So we have a motion to move Item 14A up after Item 4? Is there a second?
I'm second.
Motion was made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Ms. George. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll move on to Item 14A. Consideration and action on a resolution to authorize the town managers to expend up to $150,000 of American Rescue Act funding for the Housing Authority elevator renovation project. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Motion has been made, was made by Mr. Wood, seconded by, I believe it was Ms. Murphy before Ms. Barclay. Ms. Clori, if you could just go over this really quick again. I know we just did this a couple minutes ago.
Yep, so this is to do rehabilitation to the elevator at the Housing Authority and Maple Courts 2, the congregate housing facility. The estimated quote is for just under $100,000, but we know that there's some additional renovations that are going to need to be done for the mechanical room, hence the reason why the Fiscal Subcommittee recommended $150,000 to the Town Council. It was recommended unanimously by the Fiscal Subcommittee for approval by the Town Council. And as we've heard, it's a well-used elevator, as well as, has been maintained well, but it is very costly in repairs now at this point, and this would definitely provide some operational relief to the Housing Authority as well by not having to continually make repairs on this. It would give it much more longevity.
Thank you. Discussion.
Just one quick comment. As somebody who's been in that elevator more times than I can remember to count, having taken patients out, it definitely is a critical thing. You know, definitely, the fire department and the ambulance would figure out a way of trying to get people out, but that's not ways that, it would cost the Housing Authority a lot more money to fix the damage that we would end up doing. So this is definitely worthwhile adventures for emergencies, as well as just for the citizens that are there. They definitely, they definitely need it, and it's a worthwhile project.
Thank you. And Ms. Clori, so this is for up to $150,000, so any money not spent would remain in the Town's ARPA funds, correct?
Correct, yes. So we would do this working with the Housing Authority and, you know, either reimbursing or covering the invoices as they were to come in, so that way it's up to, as they get those final evaluations, as they're going through the project, if they don't fully expend the 150, any remaining would remain with the town.
And what is the deadline for the town to expend, designate, and expend the ARPA funds?
We are required to designate or appropriate the funds by December 31st of 2024, and we have to, the funds have to be expended by December 31st of 2026.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Grandelsky.
I'm looking at some of the, I guess, Otis, Page 13 of 21. Otis maintains no responsibility for materials delivered to the job site. I mean, they, they've got to supply a storage area for equipment. I'm, I don't know. That's off.
So this is a quote. We'll, we'll work through that with Otis as we go into contract for that, to make sure that they're appropriately taking responsibility for any equipment prior to install, and then warranting that appropriately through install and after install.
Yeah, I had that question as well about if there's late supplies, like a long lead time, and it goes up. So the plan then is just to lock in as quick as possible?
Correct. So this quote is relatively new, so we'll likely be able to have them lock in at this pricing. Once it's been ordered, your pricing is typically locked. There are a few long lead items that they are unwilling to lock in on. Elevators typically haven't been one of those more electrical switches that have really run that gamut on that. But we would then be able to lock in on that pricing. So by going up to the 150,000, if there is a price adjustment on this, it appears that we should be still well within the range. We have gotten an initial estimate for the HVAC component that would have to go into the mechanical room area, and it's well within this 150,000 mark. So we think we have enough room that should something, you know, happen with either a long lead time or, you know, a price increase on something, or just an unforeseen once they get into it, I think there's still room, and we're not going to be putting an undue burden on the Housing Authority.
Who's running the project? Who's going to be the project manager?
So that'll be Carol Green as well as Mary Brom. They'll work together in coordination, which is a lot, how most of the grant projects are administered for Housing Authority. Mary Brom's office usually assists in overseeing those.
Who decides on the change orders if they go above and beyond?
You mean if they go above what the initial?
If they quoted, say, $120,000?
Sure.
And they figure they're going to be within that parameter, and then this, okay, so we're going to have to adjust some ductwork, we're going to have to do this, we're going to have to do that?
The Housing Authority, so Carol Green is the Housing Authority, and Mary Brom will review all of those and determine the reasonableness of those, and determine if it's reasonable. And Mary has, you know, she works with our Permanent Building Commission and does a lot of change order work with construction projects. So she's, you know, we're pretty attuned to ductwork and elevators at this point. We've done a few of those projects, so it's not unfamiliar territory.
Is there going to be like a third-party elevator inspector that comes on board to kind of make sure that we are?
Typically, for this, no. Otis would have to warranty their work, and they're the ones that provide all of the required inspection reports. They currently inspect the elevator for its, you know, and provide the permitting for that elevator. So they typically would do the inspections of the, of the project, but we don't normally, for this, for this type of project, we don't normally hire a third-party for that. And of course, it has to still get approved by our, you know, building official, and it has to follow all proper building codes and stuff like that. So we have to go through those steps and inspections.
But there will be a final inspection?
Yes.
By a?
Town official.
Well, no. Elevator, elevator inspector?
Otis would do that, because they have to do that in order to put it back in service.
So it's not a third-party, but it's Otis?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a problem with that, but that's okay. Hopefully.
Mary, I just have a question. So this is just the initial request, right? Or is this going to get re-updated?
No, so that was the initial request, and then the Fiscal Subcommittee recommended the additional $50,000 on top of that. And that's how, we didn't have them go back through and redo the application.
So this is just, so we can?
It's just backup, right. It's just to show the full backup.
Yeah, because it just doesn't match what we have.
Correct. It was, it got modified, and that's why I included that modification in the front cover letter.
Unfortunately, at this time, public comment, we're not at public comment, and the public hearing is already over. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now moving on in the agenda, we'll move back to Item 5. Item 5A, adoption of minutes for special Town Council meeting October 3rd, 2023, and 5B, regular Town Council meeting October 10th, 2023 minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Murphy, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is 6A, Presentation Proclaimations and Declarations. Presentation by 6A is Presentation on Revaluation Update by Tyler Technologies.
Can I speak over here?
Oh, you can if you would like.
Hi, folks. Thank you for welcoming me. I work for Tyler Technologies. We're the company that's been hired to do the reassessment here in Killingley for 2023, and I appreciate your willingness to listen this evening. I'm going to take you through the steps of the process of the reassessment. First, I thought I'd begin by introducing the folks who worked on the process for the reassessment here. We work closely with your assessor, Kathleen. With me on the project was Drew Manlove. He did the residential commercial appraisal work. Mike Beckage did the valuation review. David Bost did data collection. Chad Moore, data collection and data entry. And Cy Francis did data entry. The reason why I put these folks' names up here is you'll notice that there's some designations after their names. The folks, the first top four folks were the, folks were really key to the project, and they have OPM certification to do the work that they do. I've been doing this work for 43 years. Mike Beckage has been doing it for 50. Drew's been doing it for about 20, and David about 45 years as well. So the folks that worked on the project here in Killingley were well-seasoned individuals. These are not folks that are brand-new to the profession. So tonight, I'd like to talk about what is reassessment? What's the reassessment process? And the change notice is going to be going out in the next few weeks, and hearings that we're going to have a chance to have if you want to discuss your assessment. Integral to any reassessment is a specific date of value. So the date of value is October 1st, 2023. The question that we're all asked to do in a reassessment is to value a property as a specific moment in time. So the question that we have is what is your property worth on October 1st, 2023? It's not the value of the property last year, the value of the property the year coming up, it's for October 1st, 2023. These three key words I'd like to point out to you. Equity, accuracy, and fairness. Those are the pivotal points for reassessment. So why do we need to do a reassessment? Values in the town of Killingley have changed inconsistently over the past five years. That's not unusual. It happens in every community. Soon as the assessments are done, properties start to change hands. People have more desire to buy some areas of town versus other areas of town. They like different-style homes. So values start to change inconsistently over time. Unequal assessments. Unequal assessments are assessments compared to each other. So you have raised ranch in one section of town versus another raised ranch in another section of the town. Even though they're the exact same building, there may be a different desirability factor why one person would pay more for one than the other. So over time, things become unequal. And specifically in Connecticut, there's a state law known as Law 12-62, which requires fair and equitable assessments to be done every five years in the state of Connecticut. And the last point is to correct and collect missing data. So there are fears that we all face about a reassessment. Some folks are afraid that we're going to discover hidden improvements on your property. Another concern that people have during a reassessment is they think they're going to be paying more in taxes right away. Another concern that people have is the government is all of a sudden going to start to spend more money. Or there's going to be a shift in the tax base, a shift between commercial properties and residential properties. So in terms of dispelling those fears, people pay taxes based upon equitably established values. Collecting hidden improvements provides a foundation for fairness. Any shift that occurs between commercial, say, properties and residential properties occurring by class promotes greater fairness as well. And there really is no cause-all evidence or relationship between government spending more money after a reassessment. So if you look at the reassessments in Connecticut, communities just don't start spending money after a reassessment. People get afraid about that, but it doesn't happen. It's a revenue-neutral program, which means that assessments go up at a certain level, perhaps, because the market has increased. And then what often happens in towns is the tax rate is reduced by the typical increase of the grand list. There are certain goals that we all have about revaluation or reassessment, and really what we're trying to do is to come up with 70% of the fair market value as of October 1st, 2023, using the best professional standards that we can use. And the reason why it says 70%, the state of Connecticut is one of the few states in the country which operates under a percentage system for assessments. So instead of it being 100% of market value, it's 70%. So if a property is worth $100,000, that means its assessment would be $70,000. We'd also like to meet or exceed the Office of Policy and Management standards. We're governed, all of our work, Kathleen's work, and our work is governed by the Office of Policy and Management in the state of Connecticut. We want to certainly meet or exceed those goals. We also want to meet or exceed the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. Those of you who've had your homes reappraised for financing purposes, it was done by a licensed appraiser, who must adhere also to the same U.S.P.A. procedures that I'm required to adhere to. We also like to meet or exceed the standard on mass appraisal by the International Association of Assessing Officers. And finally, and probably most importantly, we really want to target and optimize our reappraisal methods and resources to focus on the appraisal needs of the uniqueness of the town of Killingley. So we'll be coming to a community to reassess that we're looking at data within Killingley, not outside of Killingley, for the most part, with the exception of some complicated commercial properties. Once again, the data value is important. October 1st, 2023, our values must be, according to the Office of Policy and Management and U.S.P.A. standards, between 90% and 100% of the median of all valid sales as of the data value. Assessments, which we talked earlier is about 70%, they have to be between 63% and 70% of the median of all valid sales for the Office of Policy and Management. It's really a process of three folks getting together. The town of Killingley, working with Kathleen as your assessor, Tyler Technologies as the contractor doing the work, and the Office of Policy and Management. And that really does create a successful reassessment when we all work together. There are different phases of reassessment. We signed the contract here about a year or so ago. We started doing data collection here, which is to go out and collect information on billing permits and sales that have transpired in February 2023. We also sent something out called a data mailer, which described your home to you. You should have received it in the mail, and you had a chance to respond back to us and say, yes, I agree, I've got four bedrooms and two bathrooms, or no, I don't, and this has to be corrected. Then we do something called data analysis, or establishing models to appraise properties that occur between February of '23 and October of '23. Then we're going to get into this phase of the process, valuation review. We've determined all the values throughout the community. Your assessor has looked at those values. And now we're going to start something called informal meetings or hearings, and that occurs during the month of December. There's a definition of market value which is key here. It's the most probable price. And notice it says probable. It doesn't say the highest price. There are some states which practice on the notion of the highest price. It doesn't say the lowest price. It's the most typical or probable selling price in a competitive and open market, with people acting prudently and knowledgeably and not affected by undue stimulus. I know some folks are concerned when they see their neighbor's house is selling for exorbitant amounts. Sometimes people overpay for properties. Sometimes people get a good deal. But what we're looking at is the most probable price, not necessarily the highest or the lowest. It's the most probable or typical price for that property. It's always as of a specific date and time. The buyer and seller have to be typically motivated. They have to be well-informed, knowing what they're buying. There has to be an exposure in the open market for a reasonable period of time. Payment is made in terms of cash, and it has to not be affected by any special financing or sales concessions. So the reassessment process is as follows. There's the data collection portion, which we finished, the data mailers, the sales information. We also went out and collected building permit information for Kathleen. There's the analysis portion to arrive at valuation, modeling, which is the formulas we use to arrive at value. Valuation review. Someone drove the entire town of Killingley, looking at every assessment and every property, determining if it was the correct value for that property. And finally, the hearing portion, and then the signing of the grand list. This is an example of a data mailer that was sent to you. And it describes how many bedrooms, bathrooms, fireplaces, and so on. And you had a chance to respond to this data mailer that was sent to you. I thought it'd be interesting for all of us to take a look at what property values were like in two thousand and eighteen, which is the last time the reassessment was done, five years ago. So I've given you some examples here of properties that were bought in two thousand and eighteen or early two thousand and nineteen to see what they sold for currently. So this property sold for roughly a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen, and it just recently sold, early part of twenty-two, for three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So it's gone up two-point-zero-seven times, or a hundred-and-seven percent increase. If you notice in the right-hand section of that picture, or the left-hand side of that picture at the bottom, it shows another price there, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. This is taken from Reddit, which is another company like Zillow, which comes up with value. So what Reddit is saying is that this property, even though it sold for three hundred and twenty-seven thousand in two thousand and twenty-two, Reddit is saying now it's worth about three hundred and forty-seven thousand. So it's obvious the market is still increasing in Killingley. Here's a condominium that sold for a hundred and seventy in two thousand and nineteen and sold in two thousand and twenty-two for two oh eight, five hundred. Less of an increase. This is another example of the inequitable amount or the variation and change. Some properties go up a certain amount, other properties don't go up as the same amount. This one up one-point-two-three times, or a twenty-three percent increase. And once again, Reddit says it's worth about two fifty, and it sold for two oh eight. Here's another condo, eighty-three thousand in two thousand and nineteen, a hundred and sixty-two thousand here, almost twice what it sold for in nineteen versus twenty-three, or a ninety-six percent increase. Here's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar property in two thousand and nineteen. It sold for two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in two thousand and twenty-two, increase of one-point-seven-four times, or a seventy-four percent increase. This property, when it sold, sold needing work being done to it. So they paid two fifty for it, and they still had work that had to be done. And if you notice in that little picture there, again, the bottom-left-hand corner says it's worth now two seventy. Here's a property that sold for three hundred and four thousand back in two thousand and eighteen. It just sold for four, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, roughly one-point-four-four times, or a forty-four percent increase. It is interesting for all of you perhaps to know the typical increase in town has been about forty-three percent on residential properties. That's sort of the typical increase. On commercials, it was around twenty-five percent. This property is currently valued around a four-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Here's another one, two thousand and nineteen, for two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. And it sold in two thousand and twenty-two for three hundred and seventeen thousand, one-point-three-five times, a thirty-five percent increase. And they did remodel this house prior to the two thousand and nineteen sale. Here's an older property, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in two thousand and nineteen, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three, one-point-four-eight times, forty-eight percent increase. There was an updated kitchen that went on here. Two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand in two, two thousand and nineteen, and four-hundred-and-seventy thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, one-point-five-nine times, or a fifty-nine percent increase. So you can see the pattern occurring over time here of increases. So that's the residential portion. I thought I'd talk briefly about commercial properties and how we value commercial properties. There's something we use called the income capitalization approach. Many of you are probably well-aware. When someone buys an income-producing property, they base its value based upon how much income it can generate or how much rent it can receive. So there's an income capitalization approach, which capitalizes the earning capability of the property to arrive at a value. All the commercial industrial property owners were sent a form that looks just like this, an income and expense form. In Connecticut, you're required to fill it out. If you don't fill it out, you get a ten percent penalty on your taxes if you're a commercial property owner. So for the most part, people fill it out. And they tell us what their gross income is, what their vacancy is, what their expenses are, and what their net income is. I thought I'd share with you some information about what's happened in the past five years for commercial properties. So the average market rent for commercial properties has actually gone up in Killingley from roughly around ten dollars a foot to roughly twelve dollars a foot. It's about a twenty percent or so increase in commercial rent. Interestingly enough, though, at the same time, vacancy rates went up. And that probably is no surprise to you, seeing vacant office buildings or vacant retail space. So while rents were going up, vacancy was also going up, which lowers the value of properties. The way you value property is based upon income. You take the net income, which is after expenses. Let's say a property rented for ten dollars a square foot, ten thousand square feet. The income's a hundred thousand dollars. You capitalize it with a cap rate, use ten percent as an example, which is a rate of return, to arrive at a value of roughly a million dollars. That's the income capitalization approach. Once again, the data value, October first, two thousand and twenty-three, and a reminder between ninety and a hundred percent of the median value and sixty-three and seventy percent of the median value of all sales. We do testing called statistical measures. And I said earlier, between ninety-three and ninety-five, in the case of Killingley, we're at about ninety-five percent of value. There's a coefficient of dispersion, which test which we studied and took. We passed that. And a price-related differential test that we also passed. You're going to all be receiving a change notice. It'll be mailed out at the end of November, so you should receive it in the first part of December. On that change notice, it's going to show you what the old assessment was that was established in two thousand and eighteen. It's going to show you a new estimated market value of your property as of two thousand and twenty-three. You'll have a chance to read through the notice. And if you desire to have a hearing with a hearing officer, it's done through phone. You can make an appointment online or call up to make an appointment and have a hearing to discuss your assessment. So what if you want to appeal your assessment? What's the process? I would suggest the first thing you do is to go online and review the property data that's up there. Make sure the number of bedrooms and bathrooms are correct, the square footage is right, whether it has air conditioning or not. See if all that's correct. Then I would ask you to sit down and look at the value that was estimated by the town. We're consultants for the town. It's a notice that comes from the town. Sit down and think about it and see whether you think it's reasonable or not. If you think it's fair, then it's a fair value. You may want to go up and look on Reddit or Zillow and see what that value is for your home. All of us have a sense of value for their own property. My dad, who didn't go to high school, always knew what his property was worth. He always did. And then he said to me, well, there's what it's worth, and then there's tax value. And he always thought that tax value should be lower than what it's really worth. But I would suggest you do that before you decide to appeal. And if you do want to do that, you can do it through a phone hearing with us if you think it's inaccurate. There's going to be a chance for you to email documents to us if you had an appraisal done of your property recently that's lower than the number that we have on it. You can bring that in to us and email it to us. Hearings will start around December eleventh. The deadline to schedule hearings is right at the end of the month of December. And the hearing results will be sent out at the end of January. Then, if you're not comfortable with those hearing results, Kathleen will sign the grand list. You'll have a chance to do another appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is a local group of folks like yourselves, who will then review your case. But you must file that appeal by February twentieth. What do the hearings look like? They're one-on-one phone meetings. They're privately held. You should be able to bring within you and supply and discuss any appraisals you already had on your property, any purchase and sale agreements, if you had your property up for sale or you just bought it. Closing statements are helpful. If you're a commercial property owner, your recent income and expense data, your tax returns or your leases would be helpful. You can always submit things after the hearing, too. So if you have a hearing officer, you discuss something with that person, and you want to submit information later, you can do that for consideration as well. So the whole process comes back to quality-driven results. Quality data collection, detailed analysis and modeling, accurate valuation, and ultimately, again, those three words I mentioned earlier, fairness, equity, transparency, and I'll add another one, accuracy. Any questions?
Oh, I'll start with a whole bunch. Basically, having gone through the process five years ago, we actually did, instead of the on-phone, it was actually in-person here in a town meeting room. The company that did it five years ago, when, and this happened not only to myself, but it also happened to at least one of my neighbors, I don't know how many other people in town. It happened to where you came and presented your documentation, reasons why you felt it should be worth less, what you felt it was worth. And I was told, and come to find out later on from my neighbor, he was told as well, you'll hear back from us within thirty days. We never heard, myself and my neighbor, never heard anything back from that company within thirty days. Thankfully, me being on the council at the time, I had talked to our Paul Hopkins, who was our tax collector, assistant town manager, and asked him, well, how come we didn't hear back? And it was also just before the time to file an appeal. I only had a couple of days left. I don't know how many other people that happened to in town. I would, having gone through that myself, I am sure myself and residents would definitely appreciate clarity when you're having these phone conversations, these meetings, as to what the next steps of the process are and that they are adhered to. So property owners aren't left with expecting a response and not getting one.
In the letter that's going to be mailed to you, the hearing notice, it's going to describe the process. It's also going to describe the date that you need to file by, which is February twentieth, so they'll know that. And I'll assure you, they'll all be notified in January of the hearing results before the grand list is signed. And you should tell your constituents that that should be what's happening. If they don't get it in the mail, they can always go online and look up their assessments. And I would really encourage you to talk to people about this reassessment process. It only happens once every five years. Let your neighbors know about it when you guys go to Christmas parties or Thanksgiving holidays. Talk about it. Talk about reassessment. It's critical, and it's going to affect your taxes for the next five years. And as a homeowner, you should be aware of what the value of your property is and what your tax burden is on that property. And it should be fair and equitable and accurate. So to reiterate, I can assure you, you folks will be mailed out notices in the middle of January of changes as a result of hearings.
Thank you. Next piece is the data mailers. I had spoken with the town manager, and she had let me know that they were supposed to go out to everyone. I had a couple of my neighbors who I've spoken to recently regarding the revale, and they had informed me that they had never received a data mailer. I, in the past twenty-four hours, have reached out to the majority of the council members and found out that about a third of the town council members never received data mailers either. As far as percentage of the data mailers that went out, what is the percentage of return that you've received on a residential side? What's the percentage of return you received on the commercial side? How does that compare to other towns? And I don't know if you know how that compares to other towns that use other companies for revales as well.
I do know the answers to those questions.
Awesome.
So first of all, everyone was mailed a data mailer. If they didn't receive it, I'm not sure why that didn't happen, but they were all mailed data mailers here. We have a whole list of who was sent out and what mailing addresses they went to. So that did happen. If they didn't receive it for some mailing reason, the information is up online. They can look and see their information there. And they should certainly do that when they get their notice. There'll be a little URL that's noticed there. They'll tell people where they can go and get their information about their property. So when they get their notice, they can go look it up there and see if that's accurate or correct. What was your next question, sir?
Percentage of returns on...
The return percentage is about twenty-five percent, and that's not unusual. That happens in a number of communities. I've been doing this for forty-something years. That's about the response you get back with folks. And a lot of folks don't return it because they think it's okay and it's right. There's no reason to send it back. The folks that do return it may have a question. They say, I don't have five bedrooms, I only have four, or I have two bathrooms, and I don't have three, or one fireplace, and so on. And then we make those corrections. Now, as far as the commercial information goes, we did not send data mailers out to commercial property owners. What we did instead is we measured the exteriors of every commercial property, and we inspected all the commercial properties in the community. So it was done differently, as opposed to measuring and inspecting all the homes in the community.
Next question I have, one of the properties that you had up there, for example, you had, on it, it stated that it needed work when it sold. If you know a property needs work, is that something that you take into consideration when you're doing a reevaluation?
Yes. Yes, it is, yeah. If we know that information. We do track building permit information, and folks are supposed to take permits out when they do work. Sometimes they don't do that. So what we often rely upon is information from MLS. We'll look up sales information right on the web. It'll tell you, that's how I found out that home needed work. It said right on Reddit, when home purchased, needed work.
Okay. And the last question I have, for the telephone hearings, you had mentioned that residents would, property owners would mail in, or email in documents. Is there a way, if by chance, I know we do live in electronic age now, but if someone doesn't have the ability to scan or email things in, where they could physically mail it into you?
Yeah, they can mail it here to the assessor's office. They can certainly do that. And Kathleen then can direct it to us if that was needed.
All right. Would there be something on the notification that goes out that states that they could mail it to the assessor's office if they can't email it to you?
I'm not sure if the letter says that. That's a good point. We'll have to check that, Kathleen.
Yeah, I don't think it says that.
You don't think it does?
No, we'll have to make it a difference.
We can add that, then. Thank you for bringing that to our point, yeah.
Okay. And that is the last question I have for now.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for the presentation. I have one question. When you said if someone wants to appeal, if they have a current appraisal, how, what would the timing be on that? Like, six months old, three months old?
Six months to a year.
Okay. And that would still be valid?
You can see how quickly those values are changing over time.
Okay.
You have to think of, if property values are going up five percent a year, you have to consider that. So something that occurred, a reappraisal that occurred, let's say you had an appraisal done in two thousand and twenty. Really can't compare it to two thousand and twenty-three.
That would be too old. So say, January twenty, twenty-three forward, they could use that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So you, you say you do a full evaluation of each and, each and every home to establish their value. Can the residents get a copy of that evaluation?
Yes. You can look up online. You can see the valuation. You can see how it's done. You can see the information right there.
You have all the data, all the supporting data for that as well?
There'll be sales information up online. So you can see comparable sales information. The neighbors that have sold and so on. And the folks who are doing hearings will have that same information in front of them. So they may describe to you sales that have occurred of similar ranches to yours or Colonials near you in the same neighborhood as yours. If we have sales information, we'll certainly share it with you.
I've got a couple of questions. So if you know a home needs work and you appeal and you find out it needs work, do you automatically let the insurance company know that work needs to be done?
Do we let the insurance company know? No, we don't speak to insurance companies.
All right, good. What happens? I lived through the housing crisis of two thousand and eight, and my house totally flipped upside down. So if it crashes in six months, you're just stuck with this upside down.
In the state of Connecticut, it's every five years it gets reassessed, right? It doesn't change.
And you spoke about how there's no relationship between town spending and an increase in assessment. Do you have a study to refer to that?
If you check in throughout Connecticut, you'll find that that's true. I don't have a study, no. But I've been working in communities, I've probably done two hundred reassessments. And communities don't do that. They don't just go and spend because now the grand list is going up. You folks look at spending plans and you look at finances every year, and you're careful with what you do with your money. And it's not unusual in any, any town in Connecticut that everybody else is careful with their money. So they're not going to necessarily just keep the same mill rate, to be specific about it. A lot of folks, what happens in communities, the mill rate gets reduced in accordance with the typical increase of the grand list.
Okay, so it's just anecdotal experience?
Yeah.
And if I can, just to kind of, some from town perspective on the various, you know, when we do the budget presentations, the first two slides are about the grand list value and the tax rate. And I usually highlight the years of revaluation because you can see where the grand list value dropped. The tax rate went up because of that effect. Same with when the grand list went up, you see an automatic drop and you see a drop in the mill rate. And when I have done communications around revaluations, like I did it up in Putnam and previously here, previously here in Killingley with regards to the budget, I always give the town what the mill rate would be if nothing else changed with expenses. So you know exactly where the mill rate brought, where the mill rate dropped to or changed from the grand list, from the revaluation effect alone. So that way, as you're going through the budget process, you can understand this is the neutral effect. And I say neutral effect, recognize with what he demonstrated, you know... Um, and I say neutral effect, um, recognize with what he demonstrated, you know, some properties increase more than other properties, so there is still a bell curve to that when it comes to revaluation, but, um, we get to what is the baseline with no imp, no changes, no increases in expenditures, no change to expenditure, so that way you know what that new mill rate calculation is. So, then as you're considering, considering the budget, you know how much is truly an increase, if you will, for a mill rate. So, that's how I've always handled the communication aspect around this, um, to the public and to the town council, as we go through the budgetary process, because there, it is a very, you know, concerning thing. You know, I just recently went through revaluation in Plainfield and I watched the residence pages and I listened to a lot of those residents as well, and they were very concerned that because the mil, because their, their value of their property increased automatically meant that their taxes were going up by that same percentage, and that, that's not accurate.
Could you, on that point, Mary, just, uh, kind of highlight the timeline as, as to oppose when, when this is implemented versus the budget it, yeah?
Yeah, so this, their valuation date is October first of two thousand twenty-three, right? Um, so we'll be going through the, this upcoming spring, this budget that we're going to be presenting to you in April, we'll be considering these values, because that will be the value that is going to be collected on, on Ju, on July first, right? So, this upcoming year's budget that we're going to get ready to present to you will incorporate these values.
All right, I've got one more thing. Surprised. Um, so, I had a conversation myself and our vice chair, um, Kevin had had a conversation with Ms. Gloria regarding, um, the rough increase average over residential properties as opposed to commercial properties. Um, and also, and Mary, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you said it was eighty percent of the grand list is residential, twenty percent was commercial?
I don't, I didn't actually, I said I needed to look that up and I don't believe that I actually looked it up, I think I was going off the top of my head, so I, I'm not, Kathy, I don't know if you have it. I'm not positive that I have those numbers correct, so I will say I needed to check those, and I apologize for not getting them to you.
Yep, no problem. Um, so the other, the other piece is, so, on average, on the commercial side, um, what was the average across all the properties increase in valuation?
About twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Some commercial properties didn't go up much at all, some went up more.
Yep.
So, for instance, multifamily properties went up more than office space. And if that makes sense, I'm sure to many of you, the office space environment has been really limited, whereas multifamily demand has been high.
And on the residential side, what was, what's the average across the board increase?
It's around forty-three percent.
Median.
The median, the median, thank you, not the average.
Okay. Um, so, you did mention, um, as far as one of the, the challenges and fears in your slide, shift in tax base. Um, looking at the fact that the majority of, um, our grand list is residential and the increase on the residential side was almost twice what the increase was on the commercial side, um, wouldn't that stand to say that there is going to be a shift in the tax base?
There will be some shift.
Where more of the tax base is go, more of the base of their tax is going to be shifted onto the residential side?
Yes.
Um, because I did, I did a quick factor, just using the, the rough numbers that Mary gave me, the eighty percent, and then the numbers she gave me for the increases, and to me, it came out where the average across the board on the residential side would be an increase of four point three percent, and then on the commercial side would actually be a decrease of about seventeen percent.
Yeah, I haven't done the math, and I don't know if that eighty percent and twenty percent is accurate.
Yeah, that, that's, those were the numbers.
It could be ten to ninety, you know, I don't know what it is.
Those were the numbers that I had gotten from our town manager, so I was basing that off of, off of those numbers, but seeing the, basically, it's a substantial chunk of our grand list is residential, and that side saw almost a, uh, double the increase on the commercial side, it just goes to say that there would definitely be some shift over to the, uh, to the residential side.
It's also not unusual throughout Connecticut. I'm doing many communities where that same thing is happening. Commercial properties haven't increased very much, and some have gone down because of the economy. The residentials have gone up, as you're well aware.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that, just to kind of clarify for anyone that's at home listening that, that there is, that we do recognize there, there, it will be some shift due to the percentage, the ratio of commercial to residential, and the differences between the increases between the two.
Yeah, we just don't know the amount at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
What if you have a, a tax appeal going on with a, with a huge property? Industrial property? How do you, how do you evaluate something like that?
Are you saying there is a tax appeal going on on a specific property right now, before the notices go out? Are you saying hypothetically, if a tax appeal occurred after the notices go out?
Is the tax appeal in process?
In process.
For last year.
That's for a prior reassessment for two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
That process still continues. The property gets reassessed now based upon its market value estimate of October first, two thousand twenty-three.
So, you go...
So, that ta, that appeal continues, and the appeal is heard on that one, that one grand list year. For the rea, for the revaluation, the property is assessed at October first of two thousand twenty-three, so a new value is entered for October first of two thousand twenty-three, based on the new appraisal for that. And if the property owner or the comp, the corporation owner does not agree with that, they would appeal that grand list. So, then you would have two appeals going for the same property.
But, I'm trying to look at how that affects... I mean, you have one entity with a, a value of how many resi, residential properties?
Right, those are individual circumstances, yes, but they would have, they would have separate appeal processes, and for the, for the October first of two thousand twenty-three grand list, we would have the most recent appraisal number placed on the grand list. Unless there's a negotiated agreement prior to that, that would be recognized by the grand list.
Mm-hmm. And something that large could have a huge impact on how much of a shift there is in the tax base from commercial to residential, because of the size of it.
Yeah, I, that's, that... With that being... I, I don't know the right question to ask, I, I'm just, there's something in there that I, I see a disproportionate, where somehow the weight is, should be more there, but it's...
If, if I could just say something, that property hasn't been calculated in the increase in the commercial.
That's correct. Are you talking about the property that's being appraised specially?
Yes.
Yes, right.
Because that's under a special appraisal process, so he has not included that in those percentages that he's given you.
Correct.
That will be added as that appraisal becomes available.
So, these percentages don't apply?
Well, and that, so, so, so let's be fair, okay, we're talking about Lake Road Generating. And the pilot agreement for Lake Road Generating is still under negotiation, right? Um, and, uh, you know, we will be going into executive session on that item later in the, in the, in the meeting, but currently, that's under tax appeal. Um, and should the town settle in an agreement, that's a long-term agreement prior to the, um, filing of this grand list, then that new agreement value is what will be recognized on this grand list. If that doesn't occur, then the newest assessment, we are getting an updated assessment, an a, an updated appraisal, as we should, for the October first, two thousand twenty-three valuation for that property, and that is what will be recognized on this grand list, um, barring anything else. Um, and if the pro, if the, uh, Lake Road Generating entity, um, determines that that, they don't agree with that value, they would appeal it just like they appealed last year's. Um, that, as we did in last budget cycle, we, um, did not recognize all of that, uh, revenue in the, in offsetting the mill rate because we knew of the, uh, tax appeal process, and we did reserve a portion, we did reserve a fair amount of the, a potential increase because we, it is, and it is very impactful to the overall budget of the, of the town. And that's the, was the recommendation from our, um, our auditing firm as well, um, was to reserve. We would probably look at doing the same approach, um, if we're in the same circumstances for this upcoming budget process. But, um, in a revaluation, barring any long-term standing pilot agreement, we would assess and appraise any property, Lake Road Generating included, um, to be their new valuation as of the revaluation date. They would then, if they don't feel it appropriate, they would appeal that, and we would go through the appeal process. The difference is, last year, they're appealing one year. This year, if they were to appeal for the October first of two thousand twenty-three because it's a revaluation, and that were to be determined in a court to be a different value, that value, the, the court appoint, the court settled the value would be what stays on the grand list until the next revaluation. We wouldn't revalue it again the next year because our revaluation is over with. Um, so, that's why you, they would have two years back-to-back of, uh, tax appeals, barring again, any potential, uh, po, uh, long-term agreement reached by the parties. Did I say that right?
You did.
Okay. It's confusing!
So, there's two, there's going to be two?
There could be two.
There could, could be.
Try to explain that to somebody.
She just did.
I mean, no, I mean, I, I have, I, I, well...
It's hard, it's a challenge, I get it.
I, I, I understand it, for me to take it and try to explain that, it's, it's just, there's no way, there's no way I can, and...
And that's why for a property like that, it is, um, beneficial for the town as well as the corporation to get into a long-term agreement, because then we're not going through these multiple appeal processes that, number one, take a long time, number two, because it is, uh, significant value to the town, um, from a, from a grand list perspective and ultimately a tax perspective, um, it does stabilize that. You know, we don't, we are not constantly having to, you know, uh, uh, go back and forth as to what this is and expend those legal resources and stuff like that in order to be able to get to, um, a, 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 you know, a decision point that only lasts for a very short period of time, and then we're back to this, um, process all over again, and it is quite costly to get through those appraisals, tax appeals and all of that, and that's where a property like this, that long-term agreement is beneficial on both sides.
But it's, the, the comment that I sort of got was, they have all kinds of money, I don't, I'm not going to go against the grain, and yes, and then they point, you, to me, you caved. So, I just, I, I, I'm just going to throw that out, I, I don't know, I can't, it's beyond my pay grade, as, hopefully, these guys can figure it all out, you know, it, it is, it is a tough process, but, you know, I like the comment here, revenue neutral, but then again, is it, and then there's equity, a lot of these statements on this form, boy, um, you know, unequal assessments, equitable assessments. I can't, I, 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 you know, I, they will kill me if someone takes this and starts throwing it in my face. Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Well, I think having this tonight gives us a better understanding of everything as well.
Yes, yes.
And you can call the assessor's office.
No, I, I, I...
And I think it's important, you know, I, I was, I was very pleased and thankful that you did put in so many different examples of property changes, of properties that were, that actually transacted in, you know, two thousand eighteen or nineteen, and then again, more recently between twenty-two and twenty-three, because that really is that, those are true sales that occurred, um, and you can really see what that shift is, you know, anecdotally, if you've never, if you haven't transacted a property during the last, um, four years, um, you've heard of how much prices have gone up, but until you actually see it and experience it, sometimes it's, it, it seems a bit distant from you, and, you know, you still look at your houses when, the value of your house of when you originally bought it, not necessarily what you would potentially sell it for now. Um, and so that, that can be a, a challenging conversation, um, with this, so I was appreciative of how many, it, various examples, you know, between condos and, you know, other properties around town. I think that's helpful for people to see those things, and, you know, now we have, you know, those applications like Zillow and Reddit where you can, you can go online and it, it'll, I've pulled up my house a few times just to see, like, a, and it does give you kind of like, what's the market, and it gives you what all those sales are around it, so you kind of have that independent source that you can go to that's outside of anybody here to be able to say, you know, what does my house kind of look like? So, those are tools that we haven't had in the past either.
That's true. I'd be cautious about using it completely, though.
Correct, correct.
Um, you know, it's an independent source, it's done by an algorithm, it's AI technology, AI is useful, but not always accurate either.
Correct.
So, it's a good guide to take a look at, to give yourself a sense of value, but I think all of us, as I mentioned earlier about my dad, we all know what our house is worth inside, and that's why I suggested, when you get that notice or your constituents get that notice, before you even open up the envelope, in your head before you open it, I think my house is worth five hundred thousand, what do they say? And I open it up and it says, "Five twenty-five." Well, I don't need to go and appeal. Or if it says four hundred thousand, I'll be really happy, it's a lot less than what I thought it was worth, or it's the other way, you know? It's, it, reassessment is a frustrating, scary thing. It happens all of a sudden, every five years, and somebody gets a notice in the mail and it affects you for all this time. So, it's a good way for us to sit back and think about it and go slowly, and so I would suggest you, when you speak to your folks back home, your constituencies, do that, talk to your friends about it, have them sit down and think about it. But if you have other questions, sir, now is a good time to ask me.
Well, no, this is what, I, I know when someone's going to, probably tomorrow, maybe not tomorrow, because they're not going to have this, but I would say by Friday, some of these, the, the verbiage on here, and I'm, I'm going to try to, and they don't want to call you, that's the problem, they are afraid to call the town hall. So, as much as I try to say, "Call the town manager's office," you know, "Call the assessor's office," you know, they don't, even, you know, when they got to pay their taxes, they're shaking, it's, so this is, this is a tough, this is very, a difficult scenario for a lot of people.
I think showing them those pictures.
So, I, yeah, I mean...
And say, "Here it is, here's an example of an unequal assessment," because they're not consistent, they're going up at different levels, and this is what we're trying to do, is to put our arms around and say, "What is the proper level for October first, two thousand twenty-three?" I would show those pictures to them.
So, you know, I, I, even on prior, you know, "Go to, go to the appeals board, oh, it's too much work," and when I get that, I say, "I'm, I'm done," you know, just, it's just as bad as voting, they can't vote, so I, I'm, I'm in the middle, but when, when someone comes to me with some of this, it's, yeah, I, I can't explain it, it's, it's, it's a tough, there's, there's no, you know...
Well, you could explain some of it.
Yes, some of it.
You've got some of it tonight, right?
But then, that's what I say, you call, that brick building on Main Street, go down there and talk to them.
Okay.
Whenever I have a taxpayer in my office, and we're going over whatever we're going over, I always tell them, "We're having a revale for October first, twenty-three." I encourage them, "Come get your field card, look it over, make sure your date is correct."
Oh, no, I, I agree.
Any questions, come talk to us.
Oh, no, I, I, I agree to try to, but it...
And even during the process...
Well, I'll suspend the rule, I motion to suspend the rule, so she can... Oh, okay, all right, all right, I'm just...
But even during the revale process...
During the process, I would put in press releases in the newspaper saying, "Data mailers went out, they're due back by March seventeenth," and then data collection started. You're going to see these cards.
I'm glad you're saying it, everybody's, "We don't get any information," so...
It was in The Villager.
That's good to know, that, that is good information to know, that it was in another publication.
It was in The Villager.
Yes, specifically, no, no.
There's information on the website as well, isn't there?
And on the website.
Because I, I get, "Oh, we don't know any of that," and then, then I get, "No, later on, we're getting it, but it was done," so they didn't pay attention.
No, it was done, there was several press releases in The Villager and...
No, that's, that's, that's good.
Yes, that was it. Yes, that was it.
Um, I believe Mr. White had a question.
So you didn't do any rea, you didn't do any appraisal for the Lake Road Energy Plant?
No, we have a.
Excluded from our contract. There's a specific appraiser that's been hired just to do that property for you.
Is it just that only property?
Yes.
That only property, every other industrial property?
Everything else we did.
Yes.
That was the only property that was excluded from our contract.
And that's a specialized one, so we utilize the same appraiser that you, that we utilized last year. Um, and that helps minimize the, uh, cost of reappraisal on that because they already have all of that initial data. They just have to, um, up, get the most recent updates to that data and then they can supply you with, um, supply the town with a, with a new appraisal.
I mean, that's a, that's a substantial.
Correct, and they're working, they're working on that.
So I have a question, so when you're looking at forty-year inflation rates, the way they are, forty-year high, um, the shortage of housing across the board, um, how much do you think that is impacting how high some of these prices are and say in two years it starts to level out, but we're locked in for five years? How do you have that conversation with a constituent that's worried that their house right now, their value is way more than it's actually worth? When compared to other states, I mean, Connecticut's pretty high.
It's kind of what someone was saying earlier about two thousand eight, or you did.
Uh, no, Michelle did, before I got to.
You know, not going underwater.
So, so what do you say to them?
It's as of a specific date, it's a government regulation, twelve thirty-two.
Hopefully we're responsible enough to.
And every five years. But it doesn't mean that it's inequitable. If everybody in the town is treated the exact same way on that specific date and time, the fact that the market goes down three years from now, you're still paying an equitable amount based upon that snapshot in time. And then the next two or three years later, it'll be reassessed and then it will go down. And then the middle rate will go up, it's this.
So our messaging is in Connecticut, it is what it is.
Yeah.
So if you wanna move to a, uh, like, well, and the reason I ask, cause we went on a road trip this, uh, past summer, and we went to Lynchburg, Virginia, and what my house is valued at here, I could buy a million dollar home there.
Sure.
So i- it's just, so basically it's just, it is what it is and we really can't do much about it.
It's relative and it has to do with the passage of time.
And the appeal process, they have to be in by February twentieth?
February twentieth, but you can appeal your assessment every year.
Right, right.
You're, you don't lose that, so if you don't do it this year, you can do it next year. You can do it every year for the next five years, if you don't agree with them. And then after, I don't know if your folks are aware of the next step, so after the board has made its decision and you don't agree with what the board does, as an example, you can then go to court and appeal to court.
Right, well, I, I had somebody call me today that saw this and they were very concerned, so thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming and presenting this, um, I know it definitely, uh, uh, explained a lot and hopefully it helps us when we get questions, which I know will be coming. Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda, next item up is six A, proclamation recognizing November two thousand twenty-three as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Ms. Wakefield.
Is a progressive disease of the brain causing deterioration in memory, reasoning, motor skills, and the ability to take care of oneself. The impact of Alzheimer's on individuals, families, and our healthcare system makes this disease one of our nation's primary medical, social, and fiscal challenges. And whereas Alzheimer's affects every level of society, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, every sixty-six seconds, someone in the United States develops the disease. More than six point five million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and Alzheimer's is the seventh leading cause of death. It kills more than breast and prostate cancer combined. And whereas Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia, and the social, emotional, and financial impacts of dementia are felt by everyone, persons with dementia, their families, caregivers, and communities. And whereas currently there is no cure for Alzheimer's disease, the stigma associated with this disease leads many people with them and their families to fear exclusion and differential treatment, preventing them from seeking help and disclosing their diagnosis. And whereas early detection provides individuals and families an opportunity to connect with resources, engage in early intervention therapies, and plan for the future. And now therefore be proclaimed by the town, town council of the town of Killenly that the month of November is right hereby recognized as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and we encourage our citizens to learn more about Alzheimer's, dementia, and other brain disorders and how we can support those affected by them. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this fourteenth day of November.
Thank you. We'll move on on the agenda, next item up is item six C, proclamation recognizing Veterans Day on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, Ms. George.
Proclamation recognizing Veterans Day on November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas veterans have made courageous and selfless sacrifices to protect our state and nation, and whereas President Woodrow Wilson first proclaimed Armistice Day commonly recognized as Veterans Day on November eleventh, nineteen nineteen. And whereas this day we honor brave military service members and their families and commemorate the signing of the Armistice Agreement between the Allies and Germany, which formally ended the major hostilities of World War One on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month of nineteen eighteen. And whereas in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight Eisenhower signed a law designating the eleventh of each November as Veterans Day. And whereas on this day and every day, we honor the contributions and sacrifices of our nation's approximately nineteen million veterans, including more than three thousand in Killenly, and encourage citizens throughout the town to recognize the importance of this day as we show our utmost gratitude to our veterans and their families. And whereas it is our shared responsibility to honor and protect our town's veterans, just as they have made a brave choice to protect all of us. And now therefore be proclaimed by the town council of the town of Killenly that the eleventh day of November is hereby recognized as Veterans Day, and we encourage our citizens to recognize and remember the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this fourteenth day of November, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. George, um, on behalf of the council, I do wanna say thank you to all the veterans, the sacrifices not only the veterans, but their families make for the freedoms that we enjoy is immense and, and more than many of us could ever comprehend. We will now move on on the agenda, next item up is item seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and we have none, so we'll move on to item eight, citizen statement and petitions. Uh, anyone who would like to make a comment, uh, please recognize that, uh, present citizen's, uh, presentation shall not exceed five minutes and an aggregate of forty-five minutes is allowed for all the presentations. Uh, Ms. Chalor, did we have anything submitted online?
I'm sorry, we had no public comments submitted online.
Okay, thank you. If anyone would, and the audience would like to make public comment, please step up the podium and state your name and address.
Nice, nice meeting, you guys do a wonderful job. Okay, I'll see how I fit in here. First of all, I own property in Dayville on one oh one. I own most of the historic buildings there. And, and, and in fact, we have it posted.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
What? Al Weiss, I've got multiple properties in Killenly, mostly in my wife's name now, but, um, also in East Killenly. I have houses, I built a couple of houses up there, uh, and of course, the last twenty years, and I own vacant land on the Rhode Island border, matter of fact, Riley Chase Road, which abuts Rhode Island, I own, I don't know, call it fifteen acres up there. It's already been subdivided, but I haven't built it out, nor do I plan on building it out anytime short. My philosophy is I'm into historic rehabilitation. We moved from New York City many years ago, my father, uh, discovered Marionapolis when I got thrown out of my first high school in New York. He was a New York cop and he shipped me off with the priests, and, uh, they straightened me out somewhat. I ended up going to Providence College, we ended up buying a house in Dayville, and, um, it's a historic house and it was in pretty rough shape, we straightened it out, and he was able to bring up five kids in that building. I built a small garage, I restored the carriage house, which was one of the most spectacular buildings, um, on the property, okay, and it's been burned down. Okay, it's burned down primarily because of people coming over from the park and doing this type of stuff. Trespassing and smashing out windows on cars and, um, doing a lot of damage to the properties, okay? So in Killenly, even though I've expanded my operation, where I own most of the historic district in Killenly, I was, set the impetus to, with the Connecticut Historical Commission, I paid for a study and, uh, in the, in the, um, display cases, you come in the door downstairs, you'll see where the town got recognition for doing the study before there was any realization that we had historic buildings that were falling into disrepair that was something that we wanted to hold on to as a nation, as a state, and as individuals. So I own most of the historic district, I've just, uh, tur, taken on another property. Most of my property right now is fairly well empty. I've got a couple of tenants and I have to be very careful now with lead-based paint that I'm concerned about, as well as, um, the people's ability to pay rent. I, I mean, they're just, you've got people coming through this area right now, including some of the people that have been coming across the border with no identification, trying to find housing. Now, some of the people that I rent to show me proper identification and I rent to them, I have, for example, I got a couple of people that are working at Chuck E.'s, okay, and they're paying an anomalous amount, I'm supplying the heat, and if you break even, you're lucky. And that, but the one building supports another building, which supports another building. And in the city of Springfield, I own, um, twenty-six apartments in one failed project that I completed. One of my backgrounds is that I was, um, I worked at glass containers when we moved up here, at the time it was Anker Glass. The place was loaded with asbestos, it was a hellhole to work at because you had high he, high, um, heat and you're also exposed to a lot of really rug, rugged chemicals. And, um, it was like two dollars an hour, three dollars an hour, but I had a paper route before that, so it looked like I was, uh, with my father, everybody in the family worked. So I left there, went into construction in the summertime, went to college, Providence College, a pre-med program, and also took some finance courses. And, um, graduated from that, moved to Rhode Island for a while, married a girl that I met locally, still married after, uh, thirty years, forty years, whatever it's been, uh, it's been a long time. And, um, you know, I've had kids, grandkids, you know, and I've since bought a bunch of apartments in Springfield, Massachusetts. Usually somebody's failed project, behind on taxes, um, maybe undesirable tenants. You have to take care of that. I've had a couple of hundred hu, uh, housing court cases in Massachusetts. Around here, I usually talk them out, I just had one guy steal a refrigerator and leave owing me money. So if, you can go to court and you can waste your time in court, you're not gonna get your money back if the guy's broke. But this is what's really bothering me. I've gone to this side sign and put it on the pine trees between the park and our property. I essentially own most of what's on one oh one from, uh, the, um, the, the, the park all the way down to the corner and then going up Pleasant Street, uh, which they just paved. Um, I own several buildings on that stru, uh, that street as well, including sixteen eighteen, which I had my son-in-law buy and it's empty, it's been empty for eight or ten years because, um, there hasn't been a, a qualified tenant that can afford to pay the rent.
Just so you know, you have one more minute.
One more minute, that's all I can do. All I'm saying is, they wanna build a Starbucks now, uh, uh, in the historic district. And it's, it doesn't meet the criteria for, uh, for them of being allowed to do that, okay? And what I'm saying to you is, they're coming forward here and they wanna go village commercial. It's not village commercial, it's historic, okay? Village, what you could do with it to get rental revenue and pay the taxes, okay? You're never gonna run those buildings on a profit, and now these guys are coming from out of town and the guy's a limited liability corporation from Delaware, okay? And he's got nothing at risk, they bought two houses that were burned down, okay? And now they've applied for village commercial, it's not village commercial for them, they don't meet the criteria, okay? So I've already had to throw people off the property, okay? These guys are trying to sneak over there and squeak this project there, well, first of all, Route one oh one can't take, there's no sidewalks on our side of the street, okay? The, the, the light, I don't know how, how often you go down that.
Al, unfortunately, your five minutes is up.
Well, listen, you don't wanna hear about it, I'll tell you what's going on.
Okay.
Right, right, this is my son Nicholas, he's integrally involved in the business. The only thing that saved me from bankruptcy is my portfolio in other areas, including Springfield, Massachusetts, Chickenby, Massachusetts, and, um, now Florida. My daughter graduated, she, uh, just resigned from the Air Force, she was in there for a number of years, and we're doing some stuff down in Florida. Shipping, container housing, maybe something that's gonna work in a hurricane. And in fact, uh, she's down there and she's resigned now from the Air Force, so I've got somebody that's gonna take, uh, carry the, carry the ball, my son included, to keep this thing going for the next generation. If anybody thinks they're gonna buy property in this town and rent it and make ea, and make money, paying the top dollars now that they're appraising for or whatever they're doing, but this is why the banks have gone broke and left town. You know, you don't have a Bank of America in town. But we turned around and created the Howard Shipping Property where that bank came in from Rhode Island, okay? And then they, they just made it a drive-through marijuana, uh, place, where you buy your marijuana. So they couldn't make it as a bank. Now they're selling marijuana, the people that are gonna drive through, get on three ninety-five and kill somebody or smoke, I don't know what they do, smoke a joint, I, I never got into it. But what I'm saying is, you wanna know what's going on in town, I'll tell you. Okay, I sold the house in East Killenly and I got stuck with the next house, I kept it, s- simple as that. And I've, we've got, I've got enough land now and houses where no one in our family will ever be homeless, which I'm all paranoid about when you have kids and, and you want them to inherit something in the family. Housing is gonna be a big problem. In New York City, they're sleeping on the streets. They got open borders now, this town is prime for people breaking in and living in the apartment, okay? And I mean, you wanna cut me to three minutes, that's fine, I'll take his five minutes. All I'm saying to you is, I got people showing up, all strung out, looking for apartments, I don't rent to them. I don't rent to them. I'd rather keep it empty. I've got one, I've got a bunch of stuff on Pleasant Street that's been empty now for five years, I'm painting the buildings, okay? And bringing them back, keep it, make them, and we don't allow our work to deteriorate. Cause I fell in love with the architecture and the historic nature of the street. The, the thing that bothers me now is what happened to the Primm's Mill, right in front of everybody's eyes, okay? The guy has botched it up, that would have been made into good housing, okay, or other use. They tried to do it downtown with a couple of women from out of town. You know, they ended up getting halfway into the project and knocking the building down and leaving town, okay? But I mean, all of these mills are converted, they could be converted into good, good housing, as a matter of fact, the representative, I forget his name, I'm not a, a big politician, um, was here and suggested some of these buildings should be rehabbed into housing. So maybe the state has come along, I never got a block grant, okay? I didn't apply for one, what I, what I've done is do this out of pocket. But this, this is really aggravating me because they come over, I was doing business with Dick's Dayville Garage, he was there for years. His son took over the business, left town, got, they got taxed out of town. The, J, Jay's Garage in East Killenly, I was giving him business because I have some foreign cars, and, uh, he left town, okay? So to even get a good mechanic that can afford to pay the taxes and, and run a profitable business is difficult. So the town right now is really exposed. They're exposed to people coming from New York City that are looking for places to get into, that could clearly create havoc. We've got a local police department, which I like now, I met the guy. It, the middle class, the middle class, white, Anglo-Saxon people, you know, they're leaving town. If, if they can't pay the rent or they get behind on the rent, they just up and leave town, they could go to Boston, they could go to Hartford, they could.
You have one more minute.
Okay, well, that's all I really need. This, this thing that I'm against is they're gonna come in front of you and look for a village commercial. Hey, I'm, it's a, it's a company that's got, um, a loan, okay, and they leveraged it up and they wanna put four or five. And they leveraged it up and they want to put four or five different Starbucks there. When across the street, we got empty space at, at those, um, those, uh, houses, those, uh, uh, commercial spots, that I was the one that created that, okay? We, we did a thing with a couple of people and it had been filled up pretty good and had somebody bought the complex Dunkin' Donuts guy. And most of that space is now empty and we, there's other space that's empty. But what I've done is I've taken anything that's historically significant.
Your, your time is up at this point. I want to thank you for coming and speaking. Yes.
Do you want to, you want to talk about it? He's the one that's doing a lot of the work. You already gave him up?
Yeah.
Okay. Did I get his bit?
You, you already did, yes. You, you already got his five minutes as well, so.
Am I all set or what?
Your, your, your time is up at this point now.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. All I'm saying is, if you turn around and allow these guys to move into this historic district, okay? It's unacceptable, okay? I will be filing suit against them and against anybody that makes that decision, okay? Because the bottom line is.
At this time, we're moving on in the agenda.
Finish village commercial. And I'm having a real problem with this.
We're, we're moving on in the agenda. The next item up is item nine, council and staff comments. I, I would like to say, um, in regards to Mr., Mr. Reese's comments, um, as far as the property that he's referring to coming in, um, the town council is not involved with any decisions on it at that point. The only reason why the council heard anything was because they were looking for an easement on town property, which the council voted down. Anything going forward with this project is actually going to be going through planning and zoning, um, not coming back before the council. Any other comments from?
If I, if I may, Planning and Zoning has their meeting next Monday, um, evening, uh, seven PM. They will be, uh, finishing the public hearing on that item. And then there will be, um, I believe later on, they have actionable items on that. But it, the Planning and Zoning meeting, as we've relayed to you, Planning and Zoning is meeting on Monday night.
This coming Monday?
This coming Monday night at seven PM.
Where, here?
Here.
We'll see what happens because here's what's going to happen.
At, at, at this time, public comment, public comment, public comment is over. We're going to move on in the agenda. Next item up is item ten, appointments to boards and commissions, and we have none. So at this time, we'll move on to item eleven A, Board of Education liaison. And we do not have one. Um, item eleven B, Borough Council Liaison, and we do have a Borough Council Liaison this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have a lot to report in the fire department. Um, they received a new fire boat about three weeks ago. It needs to be sent out for lettering. Um, the old fire boat is going to be sold as surplus. So post it in Turnpike Buyer and accept the highest bid. Uh, new fire truck, the final plans are due the middle of December. Once approved, they'll start building in March of two thousand forty-four and it'll be delivered in April or May of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, no bids received for the HVA system. Um, they put it back out to bid because the first time they posted it, they said it was mandatory walkthroughs, so that's probably why nobody came to bid, so. Okay. Hometown heroes, um, Yelks are going to try and put a line item in their budget to cover some of the costs to the sponsors, so they'll be paying part of the, the flags to banners. And the other thing on the fire department is the SCBA tanks. I think we're buying eight new ones and a filling station for a total approved cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wood.
Of course, I'm going to have questions here.
Okay.
So for the SCBA, uh, is it just the tanks or is it going to be the packs as well? I would think it's the packs as well with that.
The filling station?
Not, oh, the filling station too would be, but is it just the bottles you guys are getting? Or are you also getting new Scott packs as well?
I think it's just the bottles.
Just the bottle, so.
Yes, and the filling station to fill the bottles.
All right. And I got to say that it's pretty good lead time for, uh, an engine or whatever you're replacing. Um, yeah, ambulance is right now. Ford has said that, um, you can put cash down, but we're not guaranteeing you get anything. So, um, you guys are getting a good deal with that, uh, so.
I don't know how long it's been in the works for either.
Oh, yeah, no, but, uh, yeah, we, we, uh, for my, my place of work there, we purchased an ambulance, uh, probably about a year or so ago. And, uh, we might get it by spring of next year. So we were looking at two years. So that's why I say a year is a good lead time.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
Next up, we will move on in the agenda. And next item up is twelve A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the summary report on general fund appropriation for town government?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, second by Mr. Wood. Uh, discussion?
Mr. Chair? Oh, okay. On the, uh, revenue, we're looking at, on the interest income, a two-hundred-and-forty-five percent increase. That's really good.
It is.
Oh, what's, what's driving that or is?
So we've had some, um, so we do a, uh, laddered CD program. So we've had our CD, some of our CDs mature, which, um, gives us that interest. That, um, will adjust later on in the year, um, because we do have to recognize market value for our ongoing CDs, so that might adjust as we get through the year. But we have seen a higher interest rates on some of those longer-term CDs that just recently came due. So, um, that's really what was driving that. But again, that number, you'll likely see it adjust downwards a little bit towards the end of the year when we have to recognize, um, some of the, um, market impacts to those as we go through the year. That's usually something that gets adjusted.
I mean, that's a great, no, that's why.
It's a great number.
Yes, but, is there, but, I was, it's kind of throwing up.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, the other is, um, on the, uh, page seven, on the expenditures, um, we're looking at, under highway maintenance, well, the capital outlay, the one-point-six million. So we haven't spent much of that, but it seems like all the.
That, that hasn't ju, so that is what's, uh, out there for. You'll notice on the capital outlay, none of them have been expended.
Right.
That is a, that is a mid-year, just a financial, just a, uh, general ledger adjustment that happens. It's not ever, we don't expend the funds directly from the operating account. They get transferred into the Capital Projects Fund. And that usually, that, that accounting transfer happens usually in January. So, um, they'll, you'll see that all expend at once when they make that financial transaction, that accounting transaction to the, uh, to the capital fund.
Okay, all right, because, yeah, I was going to say.
So it looks like.
But every, every other one is the same, that no, there's no.
Yes, nothing has been, yeah, so the CNRs and the capital, um, the capital, that all gets transferred over to Capital Improvement Fund in, usually in January timeframe.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item twelve B, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, second by Ms. George. Discussion? Seeing no comments, all who's in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is thirteen A, Town Manager's Report.
Okay, so, um, to start, I did give you an update on the calls for service for the law enforcement. Um, you do see a little bit of a, a slight drop in that call volume for the last quarter. We did have, one of our officers was out for an extended period due to an illness, um, but has returned to regular full duty, so those call volumes, um, are picking up. We are in the process of hiring our eighth officer, so we are going through that, um, that hiring process at the moment. Um, Soap Street renovation, um, are, um, where we need to, uh, do the final fiber connection to the building. Um, it's amazing the hoops you have to jump through with utility companies to use the municipal gain space on a couple of poles. But, um, so we're waiting for those final approvals for us to be able to get the temporary permit for that. So that's kind of, uh, been a bit of a challenge. Um, as far as the other renovations, um, staff is working with vendors on quoting and other aspects of that renovation. So the, uh, hardening of the exterior with regards to the, uh, um, glazing of the glass, um, we have gotten some quotes on that. Um, and, uh, we did have, uh, an evaluation done of the camera system. It's all functioning fine. Um, we do have, um, we're getting ready to, uh, we're building the RFP for the, um, construction of that vestibule area to be able to walk in, to be able to harden that front exterior. Um, we did get some quotes for a generator. Generators are ridiculously expensive, ridiculously expensive. So we're trying to be, uh, kind of walk through what might be a good solution for that, um, on that, on that building. So, uh, we are, um, individually looking at each of the things. We'll be bidding out what needs to be bid out in accordance with our procurement policy. Um, but, um, uh, we're well underway with, with, with some of those things. Um, PURA, I did incorporate the notification from PURA. They are going to be holding a public comment hearing, uh, two additional comment, uh, public comment hearings for Connecticut Water's rate application. So Connecticut Water has a rate increase application before PURA right now. Um, so there's two additional dates, one on Monday, November twenty-seventh, and that's going to be in Lebanon. And they are doing one on December fourteenth, starting at noon time, which is going to be Zoom. So, um, I did, uh, provide that, um, that, uh, notice to everyone. Um, Reynolds Street, um, you probably all saw that, that's been like majorly under construction for the last month. Um, I, so, um, the, Connecticut Water has completed the vast majority of their water main replacement on Reynolds Street. Um, there was a disruption in water to the church for a period of ti, for a short period of time. Um, Connecticut Water was able to resolve that and they did, uh, take care of that problem. It was, uh, an old connection that they, um, had. So, um, that was, that was rectified relatively quickly for the church. Um, the, um, Box Culvert is due in at the end of this month. Um, PJF has been, um, completing the sewer main, um, replacement. So, um, that's what you see, the work that's out there right now, that they've been out there with, with construction. Um, we've been working, uh, you know, coordinating with the funeral home on any, you know, any, uh, funerals that they may have, so that way, uh, we're not impacting them and trying to make sure, um, they have, uh, adequate access. Um, once the, so pending weather, um, we, PJF is currently planning to get the Box Culvert replaced this construction cycle, again, pending weather. Um, and then they'll wrap that up for the year, for this construction cycle. Next, uh, spring, we'll move into the sidewalk renovations. And then ultimately, final paving and all of that will get completed out. So, um, that's well underway. Um, KMS Downs is working to complete the addition area. That is supposed to get turned over to the town for student use over Christmas break. Um, they, um, will start working in other wings of the main building, um, as, uh, they, so they can now swing kids into, uh, the, the, the new addition. So kids will move out of other sections of the building. We'll swing them into that, um, that, uh, classroom space. And then we will, they will be, uh, working on those other untouched classroom wings. Um, the cafeteria space and hallways, those are planned for, um, sorry, should be summer of twenty twenty-four, not twenty twenty-five. That was my fault. I got ahead of myself. Should be summer of twenty twenty-four. So next summer is when we're planning on getting those main, and the whole project is still on, uh, currently on schedule to complete by December of twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. That's the current, um, uh, expectation. Um, the, the design team, we've had some material delays. Uh, the heating system for the, for the addition, uh, that, uh, those materials did get delayed. We had to go down the road of having a temporary heating system put in place as we're waiting for those, um, uh, new, those permanent heating, uh, components to come in. Those were initially delayed to December. They're now delayed until, I think, sometime in end of February, which means they won't be able to be installed until, um, April break, um, because they have to be able to, you know, shut down, uh, that whole wing, so. But Downs and Antonozzi, our design team, they've really worked through a lot of those impacts, um, to keep that project moving forward and on schedule and within budget. So, um, we've been good with that. The Westfield Avenue, um, phase-one work, um, on the exterior. The helical ties for the brick veneer, that helical tie component is completed. Um, and then they've been able to wash, um, a fair amount of the exterior. The brick replacement on the south-facing side, as well as the window replacement at the roof and the large portion of the roof replacement will, will happen, um, in this next construction cycle. Um, the, uh, windows had a long lead time and we weren't able to do the brick veneer on the south-facing, facing side without having the windows because they are, uh, connected and joined together. So, um, those were integral to be done at the same time. Um, they were able to complete the roof replacement over, uh, a small section over by the, um, auditorium that had actually, they'd been having, uh, leaks over there. So that, uh, more critical part was able to be replaced this last construction cycle. But the large portion of the roof, because we needed to really address where the mechanicals were going to land on that roof, um, that was held off until this upcoming year. Phase two, um, we're finalizing the design, the construction design documents for, um, the interior space renovation to incorporate that, the community center into the former VAWA wing and the rear wing of the, of the building. Um, Mary Brahm and I attend a lot of meetings with regards to the, um, review and evaluation of those spaces. Um, they've met with all of the, uh, program users of not just the renovating space, but also the spaces that are going to be actively still being utilized during the renovations, so that way we understand impacts of any of that construction activity and how it may impact East Cons programming, as well as the Board of Education's central offices. Um, so we're working through that. We anticipate, um, currently the timeline is to anticipate, anticipate getting the project out to bid, um, in January um, for, uh, contract awards to happen, um, sometime in February. So, um, that's currently the timeline. Right now, the project is still, um, uh, within budget um, and, uh, and proceeding along, um, current timelines or, you know, expected timelines. Um, again, the Westfield Avenue renovation is a selective renovation. It is not a renovate-as-new. It's not the same as the KMS project. Um, and I try and reiterate that every time we talk about the Westfield Avenue because, you know, um, just as we talk about KMS and we hear renovate-as-new all the time, sometimes we forget that Westfield Avenue, that was never the intention with Westfield Avenue. Um, that's not the budget that was approved for Westfield Avenue. Um, it was a selective renovation to get the community center over to that space. Um, so, um, we, you know, there's always going to be, you know, potentially some additional renovation, um, or additional investment into that property as we go along. But we've tried to identify and deal with the major components. Um, probably the only one that has arisen that we're going to eventually need to, it, it functions at this moment, eventually we're probably going to want to make a shift is with regards to the heating system. That was not planned for within this, uh, within this budget, within this renovation. And it was largely because at the time when we were, um, reevaluating this, um, the heating system wasn't flagged as, um, you know, we knew that it was, so the boiler wa, was replaced in twenty twelve when they switched from oil to gas. Um, and the systems overall have been. been functioning appropriately, but we know that eventually, oh, the steam system is going to meet its end of its useful life. We will likely need to make an investment in that, um, at some point. So, um, uh, that's just something that as we go, went through this project, we couldn't necessarily add that into this project without severely handicapping what would be able to be done on the interior to accommodate the community center, which was a priority. So, um, that's Westfield Avenue.
Thank you.
On the KMS project, we, we renovate as new and then it's within budget.
Yes.
The within budget, which has been revised, is there a list of everything of all the alternates that were taken out? Is that something that can be?
Yeah, I can get that, um, and provide that to you. Um, and I will say that when you go through that and look at it, um, the alternates, oh, many of them, we went into with, went into it as, let's add this as an alternate and see where it lands, right? With every capital project, there's the required list of what needs to get done. And then there's the, if the prices come in substantially less, maybe we can get something else done, right? And so that's what, um, you're going to see a lot in that, um, alternate list is, you know, we added additional stuff that if the pricing came in, then we might consider doing, um, some, something additional.
Cause I, I've got a few folks talking to me. I says, I wanted to go to some of the permanent building commission meetings. There's not enough hours in the day to go to.
I understand.
That I have to go to. So, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, within budget, where did we start? Maybe a clarification to, to keep the piece?
Sure, sure. I can get more detail on that.
You know, that, that would work. And, um, you know, we were talking about the Pura, the, for, for Connecticut Water, but we, uh, Pura came to town, as, as I talked to you about, I don't know if anybody else knows, but Pura came to town, I don't know, uh, a month and a half ago, and nobody knew they were coming.
It was more than a month and a half ago. It was like May that they came. Mayor of June.
They came, uh, they came, well, in May they canceled and then they came back again.
It was like in June that they came and they never informed the town that they were coming.
Right.
Um, they had booked the school, um, which we weren't even aware of. So I have been reaching out regularly to Pura, um, to try and, um, have them reschedule to come back out here. They were doing basically a one-on-one on what is Pura and, you know, what they do as like, kind of like a town hall meeting. Um, it's unfortunate that they really got us no information because I'm, I would have loved to attend that. I'm sure many others would have loved to attended that. Um, so I, we have been trying to reach out to Pura on a pretty regular basis. They keep telling us that when they're ready to start rescheduling, they'll reach out. Um, so, you know, we just.
Well, I just want to bring that out.
Putting it in there, absolutely.
To know, you know, that would be a great thing that I, I would like to go. I mean.
Absolutely.
It's, and, and that one time, we have it in our town, one person attended from Thompson and he happened to hear it on Winnie Radio that morning.
I, I never heard it.
And that's, that's how, the outreach was zero.
Right.
So, but I think that would be important, you know, with everything that goes on.
So we just, uh, my staff has just been continually trying to reach out to say, hey, just, you know, keep us, you know, do you think you're going to reschedule, that kind of stuff? And so that way hopefully we'll be informed next time.
All right. I have two questions. Um, do you know what the cost was of the temporary heating system at KMS?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, to be honest. Um, I can get you that information.
Other question, uh, update on the general ledger software.
Sure. So they are, uh, finalizing the testing process of that. Jen has a follow-up call with them, I think either later this week or beginning of next week to, um, evaluate where they are with that review process. And then, um, they have to do their training and then we'll get, be able to go live. So we're still hoping potentially by the end of this month, it may end up falling, depending on how they are with the, um, holiday. It may fall to the beginning of December, but they are working away at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's picking up the tab for the temp heat?
So the temporary heat, um, that is, um, largely coming out of the, um, HVAC, the mechanical, um, contractor's contingency line, as well as the construction manager's contingency line. So it's not an increase. It's not coming out of owner's contingency.
So it's coming out of their budget, not our budget?
Correct. It's coming out of what has been budgeted for the CM, for the construction manager, for the base project.
So the town doesn't have any?
We're not, no, no increased costs.
Okay. What is our, uh, what's our, what was the proposed, uh, completion date as opposed to what? Is there a revised schedule or anything?
Um, the, the dates have stayed pretty, um, static for the completion dates. And so it's been December twenty twenty-four, early January twenty twenty-five since the beginning. That hasn't revised.
Yeah, just more on the, uh, temporary heating. What did they go with, Mary, for that?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I.
So.
It's.
That's okay.
I don't have it. I, I would, I'll get you that information with.
No.
The temp heat cost and then.
Like a bad fire or something?
It's, um, they're, they're rooftop units. Um, they are, um, they are being piped directly into the permanent ducts. Um, so they're, it's going to truly act as though a, as though it is a permanent system. Um, it's not like, um, a temporary heat system that's like on a trailer, um, out on, on the site. It's actually going to be rooftop units. They're gas, they're gas-fired units. So, um, um, I can't, we, they looked at, so Downs and Antonazi looked at three different vendors and several different options within those vendors to determine what would be the most practical use, uh, most practical units to put on. And that would be the least amount of rework when you get the permanent units in. Um, those were all, I believe, reviewed by, um, Permanent Building Commission tonight for, um, some of the final plumbing, final piping for that. Um, but.
No, that's, that's good. I was just, uh, on Andy's question and, uh, the type of, you know, was it gas? Was it electric?
It was gas.
So, uh, they're covering that cost or it's just no increase, uh, for oil to gas for us?
So that facility is gas.
Okay. So it's just exactly the same, you're saying?
Yeah. So it's a gas.
But we cover that.
So the.
And they just do the, the parts and the labor.
Correct.
But we still cover the.
Right. We're going to still have to pay for gas anyway.
Yeah, that sounds curious.
The, the permanent units are going to be gas.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more. So, so the contingency we talked, we're talking about with the HVAC. So basically if the HVAC system is one million dollars per se, their contract is still one million dollars. And they're picking up the, they're picking up the cost of the temporary heat.
So the, um, it, it's actually split into two different, uh, components. So there was a contingency value within the mechanical contractor's, um, contract. So if it was million dollars, they had, say, whatever, eighty or a hundred thousand dollars as contingency. That, um, is being utilized, um, and, um, that contract remains the same. Anything above that value for the temporary heat is being, uh, charged to the construction manager's contract. So the bottom value for the construction manager, which includes the mechanical, um, contractor and everything, the total cost that the town is paying the construction manager for the project, they're taking it out of their contingency. So it's not coming to owner's contingency. So it's not an increased cost to the overall project.
But is it, is it, is that contingency money planned?
Yes.
By the town?
It's planned by, it was planned within the.
That money could have been extra and it could have been.
It could have.
Dropped down. So really, in essence, the HVAC contractor should be responsible for the total.
No, not necessarily because this is a delay. This is a lead time delay. It's not, uh, it's not something that's of their fault.
Neither is it our fault, though.
But it's not their fault. They would have to be held accountable for something that is truly of their doing. When it's a long lead time or our lead time gets, um, further delayed, it becomes the project cost. I agree. It's not our fault either, but somebody has to pay the bill and it's not their responsibility.
I wish, I wish, I wish we had that opportunity, being a contractor, to, to have that. We don't have that opportunity. If we, if we have material that needs to be on site, that needs to be on site. We pay the extra for everything else. That's, that's a terrible contract. So the town is paying for the money. They're, they're paying.
It comes out of the project, yes.
Yes, they're paying for it. Right.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is thirteen B, annual report from Economic Development Commission. Ms. Gloria, could you go over this?
Um, this is just a transmittal to the town council. Annually, the Economic Development Commission provides you with an annual report of activities on the, based on economic, uh, development and changes throughout the community. So this is their, um, this is their annual report that they've, uh, transmitted to the community. We've had, um, a fair amount of activity from the economic development standpoint through the course, through the course of the year.
We are missing pages.
Clearly. I just realized that.
A lot.
I will make sure that you get revised ones. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't see that beforehand. So I will make sure. It looks like it was supposed to be.
I was thinking I had it like in the wrong order, but.
Nope. I will send out revised ones. My apologies. And I will post a revised one on the, on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with the, the KMS project, does that apply as well with the delays that they're having over there?
Um, um, for what? I'm sorry. Oh, Westfield Avenue?
Westfield Avenue, yes.
Um.
I'm sorry.
So we're not, uh, it, it's. It's, it's unclear as to whether or not that's going to have the same impact. Um, we did a entire renovation, uh, we did an entire addition on the KMS project. Um, we're not having that same level of, uh, uh, we're not doing an addition on the Westfield Avenue. So, you know, we are doing HVAC components, but we're doing different, you know, we're not doing a whole HVAC, a whole singular HVAC system for the entire facility. We're doing probably more along the lines of mini splits through most of Westfield Avenue. So those don't have as long of a lead time. Um, so it's, uh, you know, we're not sure that that's going to be an issue at this point in time.
Cause I see, when you, when you say it's delaying the roof and we're doing a piecemeal of the roof, that doesn't make any sense because that's, that's going to be a back charge to us.
No.
With the roofing contractor.
No, the roof is already, we've already established the timeline for the roof and the roofing contractor bid it knowing what that timeline was going to be. So that roof, there's no change in that. The reason why we held on it was twofold. One was we, they hadn't completed the phase two design work yet to be able to select exactly what they were going to do for HVAC units. And the amount of units that were up on the roof, if we were going to eliminate any of them that are, you know, fan units and whatnot that are on the roof, that was still in that, uh, design and evaluation stage for phase two. So that couldn't be clarified for the roofing contractor, which is why the roofing contract schedule went out the way that it went out initially was recognizing that that roof was going to get done largely, the bulk of that roof was going to get done in the subsequent year. Secondly, um, the, uh, from the time of award to the time of when that roof would had to be completed, um, for operational purposes, uh, because the fourth grade is in that building, as well as East Con having a full program in that building. Um, you, you can't necessarily do the roof work as, uh, some of those programs are happening. So that had to be timed in accordance. So we're not, we don't have an additional back charge for the roof, the main roof being done because that was already communicated and priced accordingly.
Appropriately.
Yeah. It was all phased out. And that schedule was shared during that bidding process.
And that's, and the, the fit off of the Ag Center, who's, who are we fitting that out for again?
The community center is getting, getting moved over there. So the Killingley Community Center.
That's our thing.
Will move from Broad Street over to, the main entrance will be over by the Voag, where the former Voag area used to be. And then the community center spaces will be in the rear hallway area and then the, um, auditorium wing.
Okay. Thanks.
Any more comments?
I just got one more. So on the KMS, you've got your temporary, uh, gas system with the things on the roof. Uh, is it totally rented? Because like we, uh, well, so we did a temporary system where I was and we let, we got to keep part of it. And so you had duplicity there. So you need a, a heating system in Westfield. I don't know if you'd be able to use any of that temporary. It's, it's all.
Yeah.
It's all rented. It's a rented system.
So, um, it, it's just, it's not going to be compatible for taking it and putting it into Westfield Avenue, that, that, that unit. Um, it wouldn't be compatible with a changeover of a heating system in Westfield Avenue.
Is it, is it bought or is it rented?
No, I, um, I believe that they're renting.
Rented, yeah.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. We have already, uh, taken care of item fourteen A, so we'll move on to fifteen A, new business, consideration and action on a resolution to authorize the town manager to withdraw from Northeast District Department of Health effective July first, two thousand twenty-four and seek alternate, alternates for delivery of health department services. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, second by Mr. Wood. Uh, Ms. Gloria, could you go over this, please?
Yes. So the, um, the town, um, the, the towns collectively with NCOG, I'm sure many of you have seen the, um, letter of, um, no confidence. I did include that in your packet. That was, uh, transmitted from NCOG to, um, the NDTH board with regards to the performance of the executive director. I also submitted a letter on behalf of, uh, as the town manager, not on behalf of the town council, but as the town manager in the impacts of it to the town of Killingley. Um, by statute, the town, um, would have to make, take action by December thirty-first if you wish to withdraw from the district and, uh, seek alternative, um, methods of, um, delivery for health services. So that's essentially, um, why it's before you today. The, um, NDTH board, um, at their meeting on last Thursday, did take a vote of no confidence, um, in the director, which that passed. Um, but they didn't have any further action on that. Um, they did discuss, the creation of an RFP for a consultant to come in and do a, um, an evaluation of the meth, of the delivery methods of, uh, services as well as, uh, staffing, um, to be able to provide the district with, um, uh, how they might be able to, um, provide better services and how they might be able to be structured internally from a, um, employment basis. But, um, I have looked at, um, several, uh, you know, there are several options the town has with regards to health services. Um, you could remain with NDTH. Um, they, the town could, uh, look to create its own internal health department. Um, or if there's, um, other towns that are interested, we could, uh, collectively form a new district, right? I would say that we could look to join another health district, but I know that in my communications with many of the other, with the other, uh, fairly close health districts, um, it's, you know, um, either Killingley wouldn't be a good fit for them or, um, we, um, you know, they have staffing challenges as well, which NDTH has been struggling with, uh, staffing challenges as, as well. So, um, this is before you, um, as to whether or not we are going to, um, issue that formal withdrawal letter to, um, NDTH.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Mr. Wood?
I'll start off what I'm sure will be a nice discussion here. Um, so I sat in a few weeks ago on a meeting and what their executive board was discussing a lot of things and, uh, I don't know if it was because my tooth was pulled that day or I was just being ornery or both. Um, but I can tell you right now, uh, when I have to tell the executive board they have a job to do, I have a problem with that. And I think any one of us, especially Killingley being the largest contributor to NDTH, should have a problem with that. I, and my, my words to them were, in my own job, my job is to hire, fire and discipline people. It was their job to do the same thing and they were failing to do that. They kept trying to pass the buck. That one of their, one of their members even said, well, it's not really our job to keep NDTH together. I'm sorry, but any health department and any board that has a. I'm sorry, but any health department and any board that has, that comes up with that clearly doesn't take this seriously. I, I just, I am more than frustrated to see the apathy of that executive council. And I'm not slandering the board and I'm not slandering the employees of NDTH because I think that they do a great job. They're doing, they're trying their best, but at the end of the day, there's clearly a failure here of, of not only, uh, the executive board to do their, their job, but the director to do hers. Um, you know, I, when she came before us a few months ago, uh, the fact that A, she couldn't answer some of the questions, B, she pretty much buried herself in her own presentation. I, I've had enough personally. I mean, I, granted, I'm only on this council now for, this is my last meeting, but at the end of the day, as, as a citizen of this town, I should, any of the services that my taxes go towards should be making sure that there, it's a, it's good quality service that's being provided. And I think the town of Killingley could do a great job itself, or having other towns join in with the town of Killingley, we could do a great job together, working together. Uh, it's clear that NDTH has failed.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Um, I, I will say, from what I've been hearing from surrounding towns and the, the amount of disappointment that there is as far as the service they're receiving, um, i- i- it's appalling to me. And I really think that if we do decide to go out on our own, that we would not have a problem at all finding surrounding towns to partner up with, um, to start a new health district. Any other comments? Mr. Grandowski?
It's, it's been, it's been difficult. A lot of people will talk to me, restaurant owners, installers, um, whatnot of issues, but I can't come forward, I can't go anywhere and mention their names because of reprisals. I mean, you will not, you will get a bad review if someone comes into your restaurant if they know that you are saying anything. So, finally, we're at this point, this is kind of been working on for about three or four years and it's, it's come to the light and people are glad we have this item on the agenda tonight. Um, and, I mean, something has to be done over there and it seems like the top is the problem. And I, I've not gone to those meetings, but given what I've seen, people are leaving, people getting fired with no notice, there's, and as Ray was saying, the board of directors has gotta do something. And, I mean, um, I know Dave Griffiths has talked a little bit about, he's had to be careful what he says and a little bit more is coming out, but, uh, yeah.
They do have another board meeting scheduled for this Thursday. Um, and they do have an executive session item on that agenda that is related to the, their no confidence vote. Um, so, you know, I'm not sure if they're gonna be taking action around that or not. Um, so they do have that and they are gonna be looking, reviewing that RFP, um, that they were, um, putting together, um, at their, their, their meeting this Thursday. Um, so, um, you know, it does seem like the, the board is trying to meet more frequently to start to address. I know that that was a big conversation at the last board meeting was that the towns need to see some progress and need to have a direction, like what direction are you taking? Um, so I don't know what the outcome or, you know, what that is going to produce on Thursday's meeting. Um, you know, I have done, you know, clearly, you know, um, the financial modeling for a new district would be dependent on the other towns that join that and what would be available to that. If Killingley were to go independently on our own and create our own health department, the town would not be eligible to receive the, um, state per capita subsidy for a health district because you have to have three or more municipalities in order to be able to receive that. So, um, you know, those options are more costly than, um, remaining with NDTH. But ultimately, you know, it's up to the council, it's to the direction path that we go with that. Service has definitely been a challenge, um, and I think, you know, I reiterated that in my letter to the, um, to the executive board. I think the executive board, uh, really tried to address the, uh, pay discrepancies in order to be able to reach market rate for, and be able to retain employees by doing that. Um, but people leave at a place of employment for two reasons. They either leave it for money or they leave it because of working conditions, um, or work environment. And that is where I think that they have not addressed yet, is that work environment. So, um, you know, I think, you know, pay, um, is definitely something that they worked hard to address, but, um, they do have that meeting on Thursday.
How much is the subsidy though? I, I don't want us getting tied up with, we're gonna lose money just, just because.
It's two dollars and sixty-five cents per capita. So, uh, you know, it isn't a huge amount of money.
Right.
It's like fifty-three thousand, I think I wanna say for, um, for Killingley. Um, it's not a huge amount of money, but at the same time, I just, I wanna be clear, I don't want people to.
No.
Um, you know, assume that, you know, if we do it on our own, um, and create a health department on our own, that it's gonna be, you know, cheaper than what we're paying for NDTH. That's not the case. If we're doing it on our own, it's gonna be more expensive. You know, we would have to have, you know, two sanitarians, we have to have a health director. There, there's costs that are associated with that and we would not have that revenue. We would have, you know, we would be able to offset the fees of permits and things like that, so we would have that revenue that would come in to that department, um, that would offset some of those costs, so it wouldn't be a hundred percent tax base. But just being realistic, I wanna be, you know, completely open with what analysis I have done to date. Again, I don't have numbers to present to you on this because, you know, it's very fluid. I don't know what direction the council wants to go in and likely, and also, you know, I, you know, we don't have anything firm from any of the other communities as to whether or not they really wanna form another district, right? And so, that will completely, that could completely change, um, as this progresses. But again, this decision, if you're gonna withdraw, has to be made before December thirty-first.
And I do appreciate the, the transparency on that one too about the subsidy. Um, but, you know, like I said, I, I don't think that we should also, um, hold ourselves to, oh, we're gonna lose money, especially for fifty-three thousand dollars on our budget overall between Board of Ed and the town is over sixty million dollars. Fifty-three thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket, you know, not for an individual, but for a town in general. Uh, I mean, it just, I, I'm beyond frustrated with this. The, the fact that I only attended one meeting and God bless you Patty for attending as many meetings as you have already, uh, and you Mary as well. Um, it, just to see that level of apathy, you know, they're, they're saying they want communications from the towns, they say they want all sorts of things and they're, they're begging us essentially just to hang on, but how can you hang on? You know, if I was paying for a service, i- if this was me personally and I was not receiving that service, I'd be firing somebody and getting somebody else to come in. And that's exactly what I think needs to happen. I will say that the Borough Council, um, Chair, Chairwoman reached out to me earlier this evening. It did ask for a delay in this decision based off what happens Thursday. But honestly, I think this, this Thursday's meeting is a reaction to how angry the towns are right now. And they know that there's an anger in the towns and they know that if, Killingley especially, if we pull out, uh, it's, it's not gonna be good for them.
The Borough does have that on their agenda for tomorrow night.
Yes.
Well, I think if we have to go forward with this, I think we have to, you know, take it on that we are prepared to go. It doesn't mean we're gonna definitely pull out, but the sooner the better. It sends a message to the, to the board of directors that we've had enough, we're starting to look elsewhere and they better get their act together. So, I don't wanna wait until December thirty-first. I don't, I don't think that's, you know, cause we, we got, we were almost gonna do this last year, but it was way too late. So, okay, we thought maybe there was a presentation here, things might get better, we were, no, it went the wrong way. So, I think i- if we have the vote of no confidence or whatever, uh, that we're, the vote that we're gonna withdraw, that lets it be known, it's out there, and then everybody else knows where the town of Killingley stands. So, then maybe others will fall through. I think we gotta put pressure on the board of directors and, you know, it's, we can't pay for something we're not getting and, I mean, someone called me the other day, they had a, someone called them about a failed septic system. It's coming out of the ground. They failed, we'll see you next week. He can't even fix it without getting a permit, they couldn't even come out and do, uh, that's more important than something else, a piece of paper that they had to do, whatever going out to. How can you, to say no to something like that, when I heard that, I mean, I, I'm voting to get out.
And, and you're corrected too because Plainfield did submit a letter to re, um, to, uh, remove themselves from NDTH and, um, I know the health district they were looking at, uh, did not accept them and now they're looking at other options as well, um, and pretty, pretty much staying with NDTH. So, this isn't a complete permanent thing, but it does give, send that signal.
Well, that's what we, that's what we need.
And it's, and it's, you know, your septics, your, your restaurant owners, they're paying for inspections that aren't even happening. You know, again, they should get a refund as far as I'm concerned.
I was at a restaurant one day and a particular person from, I guess he was from New York and he, he saw the notice when he was paying out whatever, or how it was, and he asked the owner, when was your last inspection? And when he heard how many years it was, he was very disappointed that he actually ate in that restaurant, you know? And that was his, what? He's, and I overheard and I'm overhearing that, I can't say where it is because that would be, you know, until this goes on, that's the other problem. But it's, now, from something like that, that I heard, I, I'm, I'm on board with getting out.
The thing I think something like this does as well is it, the surrounding towns, Plainfield being one of them sees that they're not the only ones that are having the issues and we are willing to go this next step. And the door's open for discussions. I- i- if Plainfield wants to have the discussion with, with Killingley, w- we're definitely willing to listen. All right, well, how can, how can we do this? How can we serve our communities together and get the services that we're paying for that we're not getting?
Um, hav- having served on, on that particular board for, oof, probably almost ten years. Um, initially, when I got on there, there was some really strong representatives that held the line. Um, over the last probably five years, five or six years, it became a real battle of, and one of the reasons I stepped away was I was getting, well, I need this. Well, no, you don't need it. There's, you know, like Patty said with the ARPA stuff, what, some of our requests we got were really wants, they weren't really needs. And, you know, initially, when I got on, on the board of directors there, um, there was a, everybody understood that they represented their towns and the towns up here cannot afford it. When I first got on there, we had the lowest per capita in the entire state and that is no longer the case. Um, and when you look at your median income for a lot of the people around here, we should be the lowest per capita because people can't afford that. Um, and I think going with what Ed said, you know, it's, the, the state requires us to let them know. And I think there's been way too much waffling. Um, I don't think our representatives that we have sent have been doing too much waffling, but there's way too many representatives for some of those towns. And some of those towns weren't even sending representatives to the, to the regular meetings. Um, so, I think if Killingley steps forward, like, you know, cause we are, we have the biggest population outside of Wyndham, um, in Wyndham County. So, the, if we, we put them on notice that we're taking our money and we're going someplace else, I mean, it is gonna take a lot. I mean, I do, my other, I have, have, my other bachelor's is in community health, so I understand what it takes to do, um, what we would have to be looking at. But, um, I think we just need to put them on notice and, and make sure we hold their feet to the fire, that you say you're gonna do this, well, let's make sure you do it.
The one thing I would like to add real quick, um, even going forward with this, uh, uh, letter to withdraw, this isn't an end-all be-all. If NDTH turns things around and starts heading in the right direction shortly, because we can't wait forever. We've been waiting, we've waited since the last time we had a meeting here and things didn't seem to improve any at all. Um, we need time to plan for ourselves, so we gotta start going, get the ball rolling on our end. But in the short term, if things turn around and start heading in a better direction, we do have the ability to withdraw this, but it's something that we have to start preparing for, what direction we're gonna go and get ready, cause we got a budget coming up as well.
I appreciate all of your comments and I agree wholeheartedly. And I do not have to landbase them because you guys understand, you see what's going on. So, for me, this started when I started hearing things a few years ago about the head honcho and some of the relationships and how unprofessional this person can be with her staff and the fact that there was a termination with no notice whatsoever of a twenty-two-year employee. You know, that was the catalyst for me to start the past few months getting really involved and looking. At the beginning of the year, last year, where they left us no room whatsoever to get out of the contract, to not renew with a just out of the blue four-dollar-per-capita increase with no explanation except when we asked in meetings. That's the law, you have to do it. That was not completely truthful. There was no explanation. So, I think the lack of leadership at the top is the biggest catalyst. If they're able to turn that around, you know, maybe we rescind our letter to, you know, withdraw. But what I will say is over the past two months, there have been three votes of no confidence. First with NCOG unanimous, the executive board unanimous, which by the way, once they received the letter from NCOG, didn't act on or even do anything about it for almost a month. And then last week, our vote of no confidence with, I believe, three abstentions. If, if this isn't an indication that your clients are not happy, I, I don't know what else we can do. I, I don't think we have any choice except to send a letter of intent to withdraw and, and say, you know, I mean, enough's enough, we need to do something. And to, and to actually, in the meeting where we, and, and I will give the staff credit. The staff is wonderful, they work their tails off. They have some excellent people there in, that really know their jobs and, but they're not able, how can you do your job effectively, efficiently, when you have no leadership? And you have no one holding that leader, steering the ship accountable. So, I, I think there has to be a lot of change to see this be something that we really stick with. And I think they have a lot of work to do. Um, they did start the RFP, uh, committee, so they, so they put a, uh, they're putting an RFP together. They have the letter into the state, so they're trying to work through things, but I, at this point, I think it's a little too late, for us anyway, to not put in this letter of intent. And I, and I'm hoping Thursday that, you know, there's some decision made on the no confidence vote and I will leave it there.
So, when it comes to our budget next year, we should prepare additional contingencies that, well, depending how this, if this gets turned around, but I mean, if we're gonna have to start creating something, that's gonna be cool, the same time as we're creating the budget. So, I think we will have to prepare to bite the bullet and spend some money, maybe one or two years to get something going. And then it might come down, other towns join or whatever, but I think we also gotta put the money where our mouth is if we're getting up, and we wanna make something else happen, well, we have to spend the money to do that. That's, I'm, I'm willing to go there, I don't know. I thi- I, I think that's, we need to have that part of this conversation tonight too, that there may be.
Yeah, agreed.
An additional cost.
Right. Can I, what I will say to Ed's comment, and I agree wholeheartedly, it may cost us a little more, but we have been paying pretty, pretty good per capita for terrible service.
Well, right.
I mean, a thirteen percent, um, completion rate on inspections, I understand with COVID and everything, but then, you know, went up to nineteen percent, I, 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 I mean, that, that's not acceptable. We're paying for a service we are not providing and if this was not a governmental agency that depended on taxpayer funds, they would go under. It's that simple. It's that simple. We need to look at this almost like a business. And we are the customer and we are not getting the service we're paying for. And that hurts everybody in our towns.
Absolutely. Mr. Wood?
And if I might add in that meeting too, they complained about the number of meetings they have. And I, I, I just, I think about this council and how many meetings we all have attended throughout a month, let alone throughout a year. On top of budget meetings, on top of any, any extra special meetings we might have to have. To sit there and complain that you have to serve the people that you, you were appointed to serve, I just, I, I have no respect for that. I just, I really have zero respect for that. I, I just, it blows my mind. And again, I agree with your point, Ed. It might cost us in, in the end, you know, and I understand it's taxpayer money that, that we're not generating anything outside of potential fees to, for inspections and things like that, where we can recoup some of that money. But overall, what I found in, in, in doing this, local action definitely is, is the best way of handling things. You know, not dependent upon a, a larger governmental agency to take care of it. Us at the local level really know how to handle our own town.
Now, Mary, the, can, I don't, can I say something? So we had talked, I sent you this morning, the email this morning about there is, there could be potential, I'm not going to say for sure. There could be potential to offset some of the costs that we would incur, correct?
Yes, so, you know, clearly there's initial upfront startup costs that would have to, that would have to be paid for. That potentially the council may want to consider utilizing undesigned ARPA funds for. And then operationally, clearly, we would, you know, I do have the, you know, reports for permits and inspections that were completed in prior years. And I can, you know, base a fee structure off of that to get an estimated revenue from that. So we would be able to estimate what offsets would be to the actual, you know, costs associated. But just in totality, there's, there would be some, you know, I think the cost would be higher than our, what we're currently paying for per capita.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is item fifteen B. Consideration in action on a resolution authorizing a town manager to execute grant documents with the State of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development for the Community Investment Fund Grant awarded to the town. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Subdued.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Ms. Gloria, could you go over this, please?
Sure, so this is a grant that was awarded to the town in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is no town match or no in kind that is associated with this, it is a hundred percent grant. It's a community investment grant. And this is really to continue to kind of finalize this study that we've been doing on the Blueville mill. So we've been undergoing environmental evaluations of that mill, really, and, you know, why, why would the town be interested in doing that? Mill properties are a challenging property in order to be able to get them redeveloped. Largely, the biggest components that we have to get, question marks answered on is environmentals around that. But also, what's the feasibility for redevelopment? What's infrastructure, what infrastructure is out there? And the more questions we can answer, the higher probability that we'll be able to attract a developer that is, that, that does mill redevelopment, that this is their wheelhouse in what they do. And it just, it makes the property more attractive to be able to get it actually redeveloped. We don't want to leave these mill properties just sitting stagnant. This is one of our few mills that are, that's still structurally standing. And, you know, largely in fairly good shape, given the circumstances. So this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a planning and infrastructure, does feasibility, does conceptual design development for the redevelopment of that. And it helps engage the community in what, what does that look like for us? You know, every community is very different in what, and every mill site is very different in what it would potentially could be developed into. So that's what this is for. You're going to see that this resolution looks terrible because it is the exact form that's required by the state economic development grant. So this is the exact form and how it has to be. It's very similar to the ones that you've seen that we've had to do for the emergency management, regional assets that we've had to do. So it's, it's essentially, that's what it is. So, so I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a good opportunity for the town to be able to achieve probably those final components in being able to get that property marketed and hopefully redeveloped into an active and, you know, producing asset to the community.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
So we're, if, if, to get it back on the tax rolls, we're looking at housing, the primary?
So it's on the tax rolls. It's currently owned and it's on the tax rolls, it's just not active, it's not developed, right?
Yeah.
And so housing may be a component of that, and that's what this study really is. It's really to look at what is the highest and best use of those, of that property? What are the, what's the infrastructure that is near that property that, you know, could it, could it, could it be an option for housing? Would it be an option better for, for retail? Would it be a mixed-use development? What makes the most sense? You know, is there, you know, available water and sewer to be able to do housing for that? Or some other, some other installation, right? So this is really to, you know, there's no predetermined, this is what the, you know, use is. It's, this is the planning component of what are the best uses? And there'll be a number of configurations or a number of potential opportunities that would be recognized in this. So that way, you know, developers will be able to see multiple potential options. But it's to help engage the community in that conversation as well.
Well, it's the infrastructure, it's, what I'm concerned with is sewer.
Sure.
And from what I'm hearing is the sewer plant's pretty much at capacity. And where, where do we get over the hump that?
Right.
And if we do anything at the sewer plant, that's years down the road. So I don't know where we are here, if, how, how close we might be.
Right, so.
If that's the case, I.
Right. Industrial discharge is more challenging at the wastewater treatment plant. There is still some capacity, it's not that we're completely out of capacity. But, you know, so smaller developments like this, you know, have a possibility, you know, that, that, that could be managed by the sewer system. But, you know, having another Frito-Lay come into town?
Well, that's why I'm bringing, that's why I'm bringing this up.
We can't take that, right?
That's why I'm sort of bringing and highlighting that the sewer issue, if it's not brought forward, if whoever's out there doesn't understand, we are nearing capacity.
Right.
And to throw it in their face, I will throw that out there, I will take the hit on that. But we need to be looking at that.
Sure.
In addition, so I mean, yeah, I, I would like this to go forward. But I think when we start looking at that, within the planning, a sub, sub-tier would be, we got to look at that sewer plant.
Right. And we did submit for airmark funding at the federal level for wastewater treatment plant capacity increase. And we did have, two of our federal legislators did support that. So Murphy put in for thirty-one million and Blumenthal put in for three or five million dollars on that. So we've been in, you know, pretty regular communication with Courtney, with, with Murphy's office on this and Blumenthal. And we're, you know, hopeful that we might be able to get some determination around that. They really understand the, you know, critical need for that, especially considering we're a regional plant and it's not just Killenly that would be, you know, hamstrung by that capacity limitation, but also Brooklyn. So, you know, and that, Brooklyn has, you know, Route Six corridor right there, that is, you know.
And technically, Pomfret, a piece of Pomfret.
One, yeah, one property in Pomfret is still.
It's across the river, so we have a pipe, so we can, we got to take that.
We have one, right, we do have one connection into Pomfret. So, you know, but we do have to consider that, that, that system could get activated.
Can that be, well, I think as part of this, we got to up the ante to just put pressure on, on that.
We've been putting a lot of pressure on that. And I think we've gotten some pretty good conversations going, recognize, at the federal and at the state level. You know, the conversations that we've had, they recognize that a municipality and a WPCA sewer user base cannot, you know, they, they're not going to be able to float the cost of doing a level of infrastructure investment like that. Thankfully, right now is a good opportunity at the federal level. There is a lot of infrastructure money that's been kind of infused into the system. So we're pretty, we're positioned fairly well in that. So we've been really actively pursuing and having a lot of conversation around that. So this, an impact of housing, if, if, if housing were the use, best use of this property, not saying that it is, but if housing were, the discharge from this is, would be relatively minimal to the, to the plant, really wouldn't move that needle so much. So that's not necessarily overly impactful. But having connection to sewer does allow for a higher density as opposed to having to do a large-scale septic system on the property, right? Which, you know, how does that, how does that play, you know? And, you know, do you get more units in a, in a, in a renovated mill? But again, that's not, you know, that's making the assumption that this is all housing, right? It may not be that. When you get through the planning and feasibility of it, it may be something completely different, right? So, but, but yeah.
But see, that could hamper the broad range of options out there if lack of enough sewer capacity. But whatever, but the sewer is there and the water is there. So I mean, everywhere else, like, you know, here we got this, our brand-new high school, you know, there's still no water up there and all kinds of stuff. This has already got infrastructure right there. So we don't have to go in the road and do anything, or minimal, you know. Not like a mile of pipe to, that would be very costly. So we, we got to pursue this. I, I think this is, you know, a good way to go.
Yeah, and this is really just to be able to, again, the property is owned privately. This is grant funding to be able to finalize those question marks, to be able to attract a developer that, that redevelops mills. Not every developer can take on a mill property. And, and we've seen that where like, some developers that have no history in mills, they buy them because they think it's going to be an easy renovation. And then they languish for decades because they can't do it. And it's, and it's not the same as just buying a house and flipping a house, it's not the same. And so there is usually heavy environmental. And, you know, we've been going through that with Blueville in the previous studies. This really kind of finishes that component. And thankfully, you know, this is grant, we're not looking at having to invest town of Killenly funds. And I understand grant money is also taxpayer money. But it, we're not, we're not hitting the mill rate for investing in this. And it would hopefully provide ultimately a much greater asset to the community by reactivating that instead of leaving a mill that's just going to eventually collapse in and become a, a more problematic situation.
And Mary, one thing with the infrastructure funding available and stuff, if it's housing, don't we get a higher reimbursement rate? Isn't there some tiers with depending what you're putting in? I talked to Jill St. Clair about it.
Yeah, so definitely right now, housing is a higher priority in a, in a lot of grant applications. So many grant applications, housing is definitely, because there is such a housing deficit. And that's been identified throughout, not just, you know, Killenly, but throughout the region, right? It's a major housing deficit. And we have much, we have very old housing stock. So housing could very well be one of those components that for the developer, that's part of their capital stack. Is part of the, one of the conditions is that a certain level of it is housing. That's, you know, part and parcel with a lot of the funding that's out there right now. As far as the infrastructure for the, for the sewer treatment plant capacity, it's really regionalism. That is the higher driver in that, in, in that pocket of, in, in infrastructure. So they're really looking at, you know, what's going to make a regional impact? What's going to make a regional investment as opposed to just standalone by yourself? So because we are a regional plant, that does rise that capacity upgrade up higher. And we're not really looking at housing for that because housing doesn't have as much of an, of a discharge impact to the wastewater stream. I mean, it can, large, large enough can, but it doesn't have a huge impact. It's really more the commercial and industrial economic growth and hindrance of that for the long term. So our wastewater treatment plant, the current capacity that we're at right now, they, when they, when they did the evaluation on the plant some years back, they estimated that we would be at this capacity in twenty thirty-five. So, you know.
So we could put in some housing and it would have a minimal impact.
It would have a minimal impact.
It would help the area where it's, like, we can't find people to move here to get jobs in the industrial parks. That's a big disadvantage because there's no housing close enough for them to want to come here. So, yeah, I think it's a good.
And we're really missing a lot of that middle, what I call our middle housing, right? It's that, you know, and even entry-level housing, right? You know, I have, I have two sons, one has a house, the other one is bunking with his brother. But eventually, he's going to want to get his own place. But, you know, some of our jobs don't necessarily, you know, our housing prices have risen to a point that those entry levels have kind of been priced out of the market at this point. So finding that middle housing component and even that entry-level housing component is really critical in the area. And that's where our biggest struggle with our industrial park partners, trying to attract and retain employees, is because housing is a struggle because they're not able to find those middle housing units that whether it is a rental or whether it is an actual buying of a property, it's challenging to find that. And we are seeing a larger demographic of individuals, younger individuals and even older individuals that are looking more for what I would call like a condo or complex-type living. They don't want to really be engaged with having to take care of outdoor maintenance and all that kind of stuff. They really just want to, you know, come home and, you know, deal with their interior stuff and that's it. They don't want to deal with the other part. So, and we, we don't have a huge amount of stock of that, you know? That, that's also limited in quantity around here as well. So, you know, for years, for decades, if I go back, you know, twenty years even, many of the, how, many of the mill properties, when they're evaluated, they tend to, you know, they tend to look at housing for them for two reasons. One, environmentally, if we want full environmental justice done, the highest remediation standard is residential housing, right? You want to get the most remediation done out of a property? Housing gets you the highest, the highest environmental remediation because your threshold for industrial commercial is lower, right? So, you know, that, then that's been a big push for a long time as far as housing. But, you know, looking at our housing stock and having available spaces like a former mill to be able to move that into something along those lines. But again.
And also, sorry to interrupt, it also protects our open space. We're not having to clear tons of land to put in housing.
Correct.
We already have the infrastructure, like Ed said, the infrastructure. You already have a building that can be renovated into who knows how many apartments. And you don't have to keep cutting down and you get to keep your rural makeup of the town.
Yes, and, and that's where.
Which to me is super important.
Sometimes that density can definitely be helpful because you are protecting those or you have a better capacity of protecting larger portions of that open space because you're not trying to create individual housing units all over the place and clearing multiple acres for every single one. Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Item Seventeen in front of Item Sixteen, Executive Session in front of the Council Reports.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kertul, seconded by Ms. George to move Item Seventeen, Executive Session, ahead of Item Sixteen. Discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, we will move into Executive Session, including the Town Council, the Town Manager and.
The Finance Director.
The Finance Director.
Mike Collins, Town Attorney.
And Mike. And Mike Collins, town attorney.
Do you have a motion and a second for that?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to move into, yep, motion made by Mr. Kertula, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, motion carries, we are moving into executive session. We will take a five-minute recess to set up.